I now call order a regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, at six thirty roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Flattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Tarrpani.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Is Reverend Kurt Snare here? Okay, I didn't see you there. We all stand for the invitation, please remain standing for our flag of allegiance.
The Lord be with you. Most holy and living God, we thank you for this gift of life. We thank you for this place that you've allowed us to live. We thank you for the beauty of your creation. Teach us to be good stewards of this place that you have given us. Empower those who are called to work and to live here. We pray for our leaders, that you would give them wise counsel, that they might lead us in ways that are pleasing to you. We ask all of this in the name of the most high God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
We will now go to our public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening. You have something? Please come forward, state your name, address for the record, and you've been given up to four minutes.
Helen Gladwin, four twenty Dorrit Court. There was a wonderful article in Sunday's paper about our very highly respected citizen, Wally Erickson. He has done more for this river than anyone I can think of. I urge you to read that article. It's in North Pinellas Times. It has two, it's two pages. Has photographs of him from the time he was a youngster out fishing to the present, and also boat building. And also, the major thing he did for this city without compensation was to haul away some boats that had been left to founder here and were clogging up our lovely river. I would hope that we could have a proclamation as a result of this recognition in St. Pete Times, Tampa Bay Times, that would express the gratitude of the city of Tarpon Springs. My own feeling is he should be named a Riverkeeper, and subsequently, anybody who acts so grandly for absolutely no personal gain could follow with the same merit. If the commission would consider that, perhaps you can work out something. At any rate, please read the article. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll do a little research and see what we can do.
Sue Thomas, President of Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce, one eleven East Tarpon Avenue. Probably not a big secret that we just finished the thirty-ninth annual Fine Arts Festival. For all of you who came and volunteered and were just there, thank you. I cannot tell you how much we appreciate it. For whoever was responsible for the weather, thank you. It was beautiful.
You're welcome.
I knew it was you. You can always count on the mayor. Most of all, I would like to thank our city. They just, every time we turned around, there was somebody from the city there. The police department was wonderful. The fire department, we had one gentleman fall, the fire department was there instantly. Our city, Tom Mark, thank you. You could not even tell that that wall was, there was a problem with it. It was so beautifully disguised. For all of your guys getting the water out, with all the sandy water out, we looked a little bit of a flood on Friday. Thank all of you so much. I cannot tell you how much we appreciate your help.
Seeing the other public comments, we'll go to our proclamation. Item number one is the Mayor's Top Apple Award for the schools in our area. And this is an annual event that I know all of us really take pride in. I'd just like to welcome each of you to Tarpon Springs Third Annual Mayor's Top Apple Award. And as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, along with my fellow Commissioners and Vice Mayor, it's our pleasure to continue to recognize schools and outstanding leadership in our community. We feel it helps to create a partnership that shows our support and encourages academic excellence among our students, teachers, and families within our local schools and the community at large. This Top Apple Award actually originated eight years ago by St. Petersburg former Mayor Rick Baker. And in order to qualify for the Top Apple Award, the school-based administrators, along with the student staff and partners, had to maintain an A based on the state's accountability system. While I realize that some don't believe that this is the best way to evaluate schools, this is the present system that we have, so this is what we use. But before I proceed, I'd like to just introduce some special guests that are in attendance today. We have with us Pinellas County Commissioner Norm Roach. I didn't, I didn't know Mr. Roach was here. Commissioner, Pinellas County Commissioner Charlie Justice. Maybe Commissioner Justice is still on his way. Chairperson of the Pinellas County School Board, Ms. Carol Cook. Pinellas County School Board Member, Robin Wykel. We also have with us Liam Lawrence, Associate Superintendent of Pinellas County Schools. I didn't see Bill, but he's probably on his way. I saw him last night, so he told me he would be here. But we have with us too Michael Bassett, Associate Superintendent. Patricia Wright, Assistant Superintendent of Pinellas County Schools. Man, that traffic is horrible out there. Ward County Assistant Superintendent of Pinellas County Schools. And Representative Congressman Bill Arrakis is Elizabeth Hito's Director, District Director for him. All right, thank you. First thing that I'd like to do is to read a proclamation for this event this evening. This proclamation reads, "Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has made education a top priority by supporting and advocating for its public schools, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs seeks to recognize area public schools for their outstanding academic achievements and accomplishments, whereas for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve school year, Tarpon Springs area schools excelled on the FCAT scores with five schools receiving an A grade and met the Top Apple criteria. Whereas thanks to the efforts of committed principals, teachers, school officials, staff, parents, and students, Tarpon Springs area public schools have shown great positive momentum by achieving an A grade during a time with increased standards, making it more difficult to maintain improved and improved school grades. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is proud to recognize the two thousand twelve Mayor's Top Apple Award recipients, now therefore I, David Archie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs Florida, hereby recognize and congratulate the Mayor's Top Apple Schools, Tarpon Springs Fundamental Elementary School, Tarpon Springs Middle School, Tarpon Springs High School, Booker Creek Elementary School, and Eastlake High School on their outstanding academic achievement."
This evening we'll recognize seventeen school-based administrators from five local schools having an A. Each administrator will receive a custom engraved marble apple, a proclamation, and a personalized banner to display with pride. The first school we have is Booker Creek Elementary School, Principal Donna Gueranger, and Assistant Principal Marty Gincola. Tarpon Springs Fundamental School, Principal Dr. Elaine Mel. Tarpon Springs Middle School, Principal Dr. Susan Keller, and Assistant Principals, who cannot be in attendance, Michael Macado, Margaret Atkinson, and Melissa Andress. Tarpon Springs High School, Principal Clint Herbeck, Assistant Principal Scott Decatur, Chris Tascani, Melinda Tassenpla, and Lisa Farditas. Eastlake High School, Principal Robert Pott, Assistant Principals Ruth Ryle, who's not in attendance, Anthony Fransquah, who's not in attendance, Kyle Johnson, and Carmella Haley. Please join me in congratulating all these twenty twelve Mayor's Top Apple Schools.
Also this evening, we'd like to just thank some of the sponsors for their generous donation towards this event. And we'd like to just recognize them with a certificate of appreciation. I don't know if, I don't see Dr. Clancy, but this one here is for St. Petersburg College. They all read the City of Tarpon Springs Certificate of Appreciation, Board of Commissioners, which is sheer appreciation, recognizing an award. This certificate to St. Petersburg College for their generous donation to the two thousand twelve Mayor's Top Apple Award, given this sixteenth day of April, two thousand thirteen. We also have one for Ed Hoffman from Hoffman Architects. Is that here? I don't see Bob. Do you want to see this? This one here we have for the Els Lodge. And we, I don't see the Exalted Ruler, but the Suffering Command, you know, Mike Teller and everything. Thank you. We also have another one for Bright House Networks and Brian Alt, Director of Governmental and Public Relations. I didn't see Brian. Mr. Bruce Bergen. From, right, not Helen Ellis. This was Florida Hospital North Pinellas, for their generous donation. And the Vice Mayor, former Vice Mayor, I should say, the President of the Sister Cities, could be with us tonight. So, Mrs. Denny, purchase, Vice President of Sister Cities here, and we definitely thank them for their generous donations. Is Mr. Tom Bigler here? Well, we definitely would like to thank Mr. Bigler and First Walmart, because it's through their efforts that we were able to do something this year. And that was that Walmart gave a five hundred dollar donation to each one of the schools, and a special fifteen hundred dollar donation to Tarpon Springs High School Band in their efforts to go to the Mason Day Parade. So we definitely want to thank you and Walmart for your generous donations. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues would like to say something about Commissioner Larson.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the schools for their accomplishments. I'd also like to thank you for being here this evening. As the parents might know, but some of the other people in the audience might not know, this is FCAT week. So we really appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule and being here this evening. Thank you and congratulations.
Yeah, I didn't know if y'all had a thing to say. We'll now go to public comments, and I see our friend and school board member heading forward there. Robin Wykel.
I have a whole book, no. Trying to be electronic. Good evening, Mayor Archie and Commissioners, and congratulations, Commissioner Banther, and the reelection of Commissioner Larson and Mayor Archie. It's a nice feeling, isn't it, you can get to work? Congratulations to the schools of Tarpon Springs earning the Tarpon Springs Mayor Award, Top Apple Mayor Award. The leadership that these schools exhibit is outstanding, and it reflects in our students and our community. Please celebrate tonight, even though it is FCAT week. Reflecting on leadership today, I've learned a lot about sustainable leadership, and which I haven't been so good at in the past. Initiating programs, ideas, changes can't be solely sustained on the person that's currently in place. So because leaders come and go, it's nice that some of us are staying. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for recognizing the partnership that the city has with our schools, and the bridge between education and a good economy. Only working together can we build that relationship and that economy. I have a three E effect. You can use it for whatever. It's called, "Education equals employment equals economy." And we all have to work together to find that, to get that end result. With that being said, I want to let you know state assessment will be changing over the next two years, and you won't be hearing the word FCAT anymore. You will be hearing a word, but it just won't be FCAT. So with that in mind, I hope there's a way that we continue to partner and sustain this great honor for the Top Apple Mayor's Award. Looking forward into the future. And I'm going to close by thanking staff. As an elected official, I do realize you make them look good. And with all the devil in the details, even though they're all handsome and pretty too. So we appreciate, I appreciate that. I have my nephew here with me, Mr. Peter Bolton, who's going to grab. We brought some apples that we just want to give each one of you tonight to take home and eat. And Peter, Commissioner Banther and Commissioner Townsend are going to, please wait till Rotary on Thursday, because I only brought eight apples, and we'll give you yours on Thursday. I'm a loser. I thought there was only eight of you. You may start passing them out. This is my nephew, Peter Bolton, who is a student at Tarpon Springs Elementary. Thank you all very much.
He just says he doesn't tell they run out. Do I look like I'm hungry? I'm friendly though. Yeah, he's telling the nice people. All the nice people get apples. Me and my colleague David, two Davids, we don't get apples. I want to come to Rotary so I can get my apple. Robin, I thought we was friends, you know. Turn your nephew against me already, you know. But we do thank Robin for these apples, and it's indeed a pleasure for us to do this. You know, our schools are the fabric of our community, and I tell everyone that, you know, this is one of the keys to a quality life. And having a good school system means so much to all of us, and we appreciate all of your hard work and effort. And if y'all would just bear with me, it was something that I wanted to do initially that I forgot, but I wanted just to have just a moment of silence for these individuals in Boston. You know, when one of us hurts, it's boys. In this country, all of us hurt. And I know that the events that happened is very, very tragic to all of us. And I just want to just take just a moment of silence, just in honor of those that lost their lives and those that were hurt in that tragic event in Boston. Thank you. We could take a little break, but I know that, you know, all of the school board members and the rest, you know, don't mind being around here with us a little while, but if you choose to leave, you can at any point in time. But we would definitely welcome y'all staying with us. I'm going to continue because our agenda is very, very long. We thank our city manager for that, but, you know. I should not have given him an apple, you know. The next item that we have on our agenda is a proclamation for, we salute you, Jay. This proclamation reads, "The City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas two generations of American men and women in uniforms have defeated tyrants, liberated continents, and set a standard of courage and idealism for the entire world. And whereas to protect the nation they love, our veterans stepped forward when America needed them most. Answering the call with honor, decency, and resolve, our veterans have shown the power of liberty and earned the respect and admiration of grateful nation, of a grateful nation. And whereas today we honor those who have served freedom's cause, we salute the members of our armed forces who are confronting our adversaries abroad, and we honor the men and women who left America's shores but did not live to be thanked as veterans. They will always be remembered by our country. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs encourages all Americans to recognize the valiant sacrifice of our veterans, our veterans represent the best of America, and they deserve the best America can give them. Now therefore I, David Archie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, hereby proclaim, May twenty seventh, two thousand thirteen, as we salute your day and say so of America's day, honoring all veterans' services to America, Bolins and Chambers and Resource Solutions Community Service Project." I think that's so. Chambers.
Here. My name is George Chambers, and I'd like to just start off with, I have a special presentation for you tonight. I think that when you're talking about veterans, I think the best thing to do is sing the National Anthem. And so with the mayor's permission, I would like to invite our singers down to sing the National Anthem, and then I'll do my presentation. Mr. Mayor, with another indulgence, Major Pete Chambers, who is my brother, a two Purple Heart recipient, a battalion surgeon, and a Green Beret, and at Fort Bragtonite, sent me a message I would like me to play. And so with the indulgence. Now, before I say that, on May twenty seventh Memorial Day, the city, the residents, and the businesses of Tarpon Springs have said very clearly and fairly loudly that they salute the veterans of this town and of this community. If you have a sign, you have a poster, hold it up, let me know if you see it. Because if you haven't seen it here, what you will do is if you drive down Tarpon Avenue or Altar Nineteen or the Sponge Docks, you will see it there. Meekanos has one, Gift World. I mean, every business has it. You walk into a business, they don't have it. Ask them if they want one, just call my office, I'll give them one. And Rick Broome of Resource Solutions has donated all the printing, and every one of these are customized with the business's name on it. So I want you to know that we're behind this a hundred and ten percent. So take a look at the website, we salute you.us. In two thousand and eleven, we did this event there, and we raised about eight thousand dollars. With forty days, we started the project with forty days to go, and the day of the event, we raised eight thousand dollars. Today, I can proudly tell you that with forty days to go, we've raised four thousand nine hundred and twenty seven dollars. Okay? The businesses are getting behind this. The Sand Soldiers of America, who are supporting this event. Gus Bill Arrakis, who's a keynote speaker, the sheriff, the police chief, the mayor. All the people that are involved in this project to make it successful are doing a great job. Bobby Palermo gave his time and energy for the evening event to perform. If you've never seen him perform, it's amazing. Without further ado though, I'm going to let you have this message from Pete Chambers. He's my brother. Very thrilling to have him be able to come down. If you came to the event in two thousand and eleven, you might have remembered that he was the one that actually introduced Gus Bill Arrakis. And this time, I spoke with Gus the other day, Congressman Bill Arrakis, and he said he'd be honored to introduce my brother. So we're looking forward to this event.
Hello, everyone. This is Major Pete Chambers, calling you at six o'clock my time, uh, wanting to thank you tonight for, uh, coming in and helping my brother George out with his, uh, project. I think it's a worthy project and, uh, again, I thank you for attending and, uh, I noticed that you have raised some money thus far, which has surpassed by far anything that was done last year and I hope we continue the trend as a worthy cause. Uh, I hope to, uh, see you all on the event and, uh, hopefully represent appropriately. Again, uh, thank you very much and, uh, God bless.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to salute our city. Barless and Chambers and Resource Solutions wanted this to be an event of Tarpon Springs and I hope we've created that. Thank you.
We thank you and we're looking forward to it. Thank you. The next item that we have is a proclamation for Earth Day. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas Earth Day is Monday, April twenty seventh, two thousand thirteen, and Arbor Day is Friday, April twenty sixth, two thousand thirteen, and whereas Earth Day and Arbor Day inspire many organizations to host environmental events to help raise awareness of environmental issues during the month of April. And whereas the Earth Day theme ensures the face of climate change and whereas this theme seeks to put a human face to the dangers associated with global climate change, the campaign calls the people of all nationalities to act now and organize events on Earth Day to help prevent the dangerous impacts associated with rising temperatures. And whereas we can see the negative influences of climate change taking place throughout Florida, specifically through rising sea temperatures and sea levels. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs and Earth Day Network wants to bring awareness to this environmental issue that affects billions worldwide, now therefore I, David O'Rourke, hereby virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, hereby proclaim April twenty second, two thousand thirteen, as, uh, Earth Day and will be mailing this to the appropriate person. The next, uh, proclamation that we have is National Arbor Day. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that extension date to set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water cutting heating and cooling costs moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, given us painful wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhancing economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, David O'Rourke, hereby virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, hereby proclaim that April twenty sixth, two thousand thirteen, the last Friday of April, will be recognized by the City of Tarpon Springs in support of National Arbor Day. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their heart and promote the well-being of this, uh, of this and future generations. And, uh, Mr. Arbor Day, Mr. Richard Haynes will be accepted.
Well, uh, thank you. Uh, I'm the City Arborist for the City of Tarpon Springs and in celebration of Arbor Day, uh, two Saturdays from now on the twenty-seventh, we're going to be giving away three hundred and fifty trees. First come, first served, but there are, uh, seven different species and if you're a resident of Tarpon Springs and wanna plant a tree, please come out, we'll be on Court Street, uh, behind town, downtown, and just, uh, be prepared to, you can take two trees home with you and the trees will be between three and four feet tall, so they'll fit in your trunk or the backseat of your car. So please come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is National Library Week and, uh, this proclamation reads, "Whereas libraries are the heart of our communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of our communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls, and whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community, and whereas and address local issues, and whereas libraries are trained, uh, tech-savvy professionals, uh, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like ebooks, and whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume writing, twenty-four-seven homework help, and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, to older adults planning their retirement. And whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore I, David O'Rourke, hereby virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, hereby proclaim the week of April fourteenth through the twentieth, two thousand thirteen, as National Library Week, and I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at our library, communities matter at your library. And we have our librarian."
Mayor and Board of Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation, recognizing libraries and all we do, and I'd like to tell you about a few activities we have going on at the library. Um, throughout two thousand and thirteen, we've been celebrating Viva Florida Five Hundred, the five-hundredth anniversary of Ponchon landing on Florida shores, and for National Library Week, we're having a Viva Florida Five Hundred Photography Contest where, um, people can come and identify different photographs we have of historic locations in Tarpon Springs and be entered into, uh, drawing for prizes that are sponsored by the Friends. And, uh, the following week, um, we're going to identify all the locations and provide information about these local treasures. Uh, and at the end of the week, on Saturday, the twentieth, from ten to three, we're having a special VHS sale. Uh, the library's been fortunate to be able to replace all our old VHS tapes with new DVDs, thanks to generous donations from the, uh, foundation, and all of the withdrawn VHS tapes will be available at the sale along with great bargains, so I hope you guys will join us on the twentieth and then on the twenty-seventh, um, as mentioned earlier, um, we're having the city open house and touch it truck event on Lemon Street in front of the library. We'll have wonderful trees and lots of great activities there too, so thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask if my colleagues would go back off, uh, I just saw Dr. Keller, uh, come in and I know that there's presentations for the library, but, uh, we wanna let Tarpon Middle School know that we, uh, we appreciate their efforts too, so we can give away this last one here. I told you it's racking with man. Now, Dr. Keller, I don't know what he's doing. Now we go to our presentations and item number six and that's the Library Board Annual Report.
Thank you. I'm Sherry Patterson, Chairperson of the Library Advisory Board, resident of Tarpon Springs, fifteen oh five Ponchetta Avenue. The Library Advisory Board, uh, meets once a month and here's the director's report, asks questions, uh, makes suggestions, and, uh, reviews different things, uh, during the, that have taken place during the month, the statistics and that type of thing. The current library board is comprised of, uh, me as chairman, Helen Gladwin as vice-chairman, Debbie Solikas as secretary, Marty Ciancola, who's doing double duty tonight, Trish Gregory, Dan Fortes, who's not here tonight, Julie Eichmeyer, I don't believe she's here, Bill Grantham, who normally doesn't miss one of these things, is out in Arizona with his daughter, Kathleen Monahan, Director of Cultural and Civic Services, I haven't seen Kathleen tonight, and of course Carrie as library director, and Denise, who's gonna run this thing for me tonight. The library has a lot of, uh, things to celebrate over the years. Uh, we've celebrated fifteen years in the current location, uh, last year and, uh, the current, uh, year, we'll make it sixteen, the library actually was founded in Tarpon Springs in nineteen sixteen and it was members of the Women's Club that started the first library, uh, in a room over the city clerk's office in the current cultural center, which was the city hall at the time. The library has been serving the community then for over a century and just in the six years that I have been on the Library Advisory Board, I have seen many, many changes. The core services remain the same. We circulate materials, provide information, promote literacy, and present educational and entertaining programs. But what we're doing as a group and as, uh, uh, Department of the City is to try to meet the needs of today, but prepare us for tomorrow because we're in an ever-changing world right now. It's been noted that to become a twenty-first century library, we must have, uh, the ability to meet the needs of the widest spectrum in history of literacy in this country. They're made up of three different groups of people that we service here in Tarpon Springs. The first group we call digital fugitives. That is those who are, um, patrons who, uh, we've always catered to, the ones who really aren't in the digital world, the ones who come to the library to ask their questions or to get their books. Most of them really don't wanna use the computer and they're looking for the standard services that a library has always, um, offered to them. Then we have the digital immigrant, which is probably the category I would fit into. I didn't grow up with computers. I was forced to use computers when I was working. And then I fell in love with computers and really got to enjoy them. That person has an ever-moving spectrum of literacy with computers and has some certain needs of the digital fugitive crowd, but also some of the needs of the digital native. I would dare say that if any of you have children who are pre-teens below or early teens or mid-teens who have grown up with computers, those are the digital natives and their needs from our library are completely different than the needs that I have or my mother, if she was still living, would have. So when you look at that, you have to realize that when we meet the needs of today, we're meeting the needs of all of the people that fit in all three of these categories. So you have to have librarians and the librarian techs who can meet all of these different needs and do it so that our patron leaves happy with the services. And if you've ever read the surveys regarding our library, you know our people are very, very happy. Therefore, we have to provide the traditional services, we have to, uh, make available the latest technologies, including the ebooks, but for those digital fugitives who get given an ebook reader for Christmas, we also have to provide the training to help them know what buttons to push and how to read, you know, that latest book that has been downloaded to their Kindle or their Nook. And our librarians do a very good job of assisting and in training these people. And of course, the continuing high employment, we see a lot of people who are out of jobs and we provide services to help them get a job, you know, helping with resume writing and that type of thing. And, you know, last year, we added the kilowatt program and, uh, if you haven't tested all of your equipment at home, you might wanna take a look at, uh, testing your electricity to see how it does. In fiscal year twenty twelve, about seven hundred people visited the library every day and, uh, two hundred people a day used the computers. Over a thousand materials, being books, magazines, or what have you, were circulated every, each day. We serve even more people through the outreach program and in partnering with other city departments and divisions, local schools and organizations. The library participated in countywide programs through their membership of the Canellis Public Library Cooperative. Service in the library in the community, um, was done through the partnerships with a lot of different people. My favorite of this whole list, of course, is the identity theft program that we did with the Tarpon, uh, City Police Department, uh, sponsored by the Friends of the Library jointly with the Women's Club of Tarpon Springs. And we got a very good turnout for the identity theft program and it's one that we'll probably want to repeat because that is such a great issue these days and, uh, people can't hear too much about what they need to do to protect themselves. Then you go on down the list, you'll see that we have a lot of programs that we do with the schools, with the other departments. Joy Herrera, our new services director, will go out and, um, present programs to the Tarpon Boys and Girls Club. Fundraising, of course, is a major issue for us. Most of that is done through donations from the community when, uh, people pass on, a lot of times, they'll ask that funds be donated to the library. The support of the Friends of the Library is extremely important to our library and the relationship between the Friends of the Library and the library staff is an excellent one. In the year of 2012, the Friends donated $50,000 this year, and only $17,500 of that came from bookstore sales and book sales. Actually, the bookstore makes more money than any other book sales do because there's a very, very low prices. The Library Foundation dissolved in February. The Foundation, over the years, had usually given about $3,000 because they were charged with keeping the endowment at a certain level, and they could only give, you know, a certain amount each year because they had to keep that level in the endowment. Last year, they donated $10,000 to the library, and that $10,000 was to be used to replace the VHS tape collection. So while some tapes have been kept because they are local tapes, something like Chris Hill's tapes on how his paintings were made for the legislature in Tallahassee. Most of them will be sold this weekend at the VHS tape sale. We have replaced them with DVDs using that money, and then the Friends kicked in the additional money needed for the replacement of the fiction, the movies, as it were. The Foundation dissolved at the end of February, and their dissolution clause indicated that they could only give the money, the endowment, to another 501(c)(3) organization of like purpose. And of course, the Friends of the Library was the only 501(c)(3) around with the same purpose as the Foundation. So they wrote a check to us, and we have increased our endowment in the investment portfolio, and we'll keep it at that increased level so that we can protect those funds that the Foundation gave us. Focusing on the Florida's history, you know, Kerry already talked about our Viva Florida 500 celebration. That is something that's dear to my heart. I've 20 years in Tarpon Springs now, and I came from Virginia, which is another state with a lot of history. But none of the history in Virginia, to me, can equal what is available in Florida. The Florida's history is so deep with so much going on. This is a wonderful thing for the state to be doing. The two programs that we had, for any of you who were at Jim Schur's presentation, I think it was January 30th or 31st, we actually had to take the partition down between the Friends Room and New Services. Otherwise, we would have been in trouble with the Fire Department. We had 129 people turn out for that Tarpon Springs Through the Decades program. We hope to be able to bring Jim back to do that program again for- because we had people who just had to drive by. They couldn't find parking spaces, and then they saw the crowd inside, so they just turned around and left. So hopefully, we'll be able to get him back to do it again. Fascinating program. A month later, a little over a month later, we had Terry Fortner, whose grandmother, Myrtle Sherbet, grew up on Caladese Island. She came and did the program on Caladese and her grandmother's memories in her book and her cookbook. And that was very well received. I think we had somewhere around 50 people for that program as well. So now we're still planning more Viva 500 programs. Chris Hill is extremely busy right now, but has said that he will try to be able to do a program for us at the end of the year as we finish the celebration of Viva 500. Looking ahead, we're talking about more eBook collections. The biggest complaint you may have yourself or hear from other people is that you have to wait for the eBook. They're all out, so you have to get on a waiting list. So we have two new collections coming, 3M Cloud and Baker &amp; Taylor Access 360. We also have a mobile application to access the Polaris Countywide Library catalog. Will be available shortly, and that'll give us the opportunity to search for materials. The Canales Library in the Local Agreement is expiring on September 30th of this year. I know that all of the city managers and the city boards have been- have received, you know, information regarding this and are working hard on getting that deal done. Now, this is the statistics, which this year, we've got all on one page, and they're kind of eye-opening. I'm not going to go down and read all of the statistics. You all can read them, and I know you've got a handout with all of them in it. One of the things that Bill Grantham asked us to do, which Kerry put on a page to hand out to you all, was to tell you all about the special collections that also figure into everything that the library does with these statistics. We still have the Business Center, the Pesci Business Center, which was paid for and is supported by the Friends of the Library. The Depository for the Stover Chemical Superfine Site Information. Fortunately, that is over with, but we still have to maintain those. And then all of the other collections that we have that people really depend on, the Florida section, books are always being checked out of there. Foreign Language, Sal in the library, and Irene really worked with expanding the Foreign Language collection. And then Genealogy, which Denise here, has really made that take off and has become very popular. So I just wanted to thank all of you very much. I absolutely enjoyed my service on the Library Advisory Board, and I have definitely appreciated the support that this group and others that have come and gone over the last six years have given to our wonderful library. It's great to live in a city where our elected officials and our city manager understand how important the library is to the citizens who live here. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you, Ms. Patterson, and all of the Board of the, the Library Board members, and everyone that's involved in helping to make us to have a number-one library. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to-
Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the Library Board this evening for making the presentation. I can honestly tell you that it's a presentation that I look forward to year after year, specifically because on a night like tonight when you make a report to us, it gives the Commission an opportunity to learn what you're doing, what you're planning, gives us some statistics that are really eye-opening and somewhat overwhelming. The statistic that over 208,000 people come to the library year after year just says a lot to me. The library, part of our mission statement, is for the library to be a focal point within the community. I can tell you that, excuse me, when 700 people a day attend the library, that's a focal point of the community. I can't think of any other department or building or business that has 700 people come through the doors day in and day out. So to me, it's overwhelming, and it's something that's very- I can be very proud of. I like to see through your reports that the library resources are growing not only with demand, but with the ever-changing fortunes of time. So that's something that I look forward to seeing as the years go on and trends change or technology changes, that our library is changing with that. As we all know, education is the foundation for our future, so I can appreciate everything that you're doing. I want to thank all the library staff, the board, and the volunteers, and specifically, I want to give a special thanks to Denise Manning as I learned that you are the superior researcher and technician. So, thank you.
Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, very quickly.
I just wanted to again thank the Library Board for being here and for the presentation and for all the many hours that you put into the- making our library what it is. And I wanted to follow up on one thing Commissioner Terry Panney mentioned. He was thanking the volunteers, and I was just looking at the number, 3,997 volunteer hours. That's a big number, and that's exciting that we have so many people. You want to add something to it? We should include those. So the number is actually significantly larger than... Well, that's neat. That's really special that we have that many hours of volunteer hours for the library. Thank you.
Mr. Beck? Yes, thank you all again for coming out tonight. I know that my grandmother is a volunteer there at the library, and she really enjoys her work there twice a week, and she can speak highly of- about you all and the work that you all do. So, thank you.
Thank you once again, and you must look out for your leadership in terms of the library itself. Next, we'll go to item number seven. It's the Chamber of Commerce Education Award.
Ms. Thomas, President, Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce, 111 East Tarpon Avenue. I brought an entourage tonight. One of- as you know, this is one of my favorite things to do because this really shows the people who are interested in making our city look so good. We get a lot of new businesses that come in. They find an old building, they fix it up or they paint it or whatever. But what I really enjoy is when we get a family who's been here for a long time, and they look at the buildings and redo them, make them look wonderful. The Cantona's family has been here a long time, 1938.
Well, that's when Dad-
Give or take. And we're very happy to make the award to them tonight because it's so nice to have an old family who really cares about the city. I'm going to let Jim talk about what they have done and what they do. He knows much more about him than I do.
I'm actually not going to take much time at all. The entourage behind me, I asked when we were told of- that we were going to receive the award, I asked the architect and the builder to come and be a part of the award, and Steve Klar and Tim from Klar &amp; Klar are here, and Ed Prefsky, the builder. It was really a collaboration of efforts to turn our most western building, the one building that we capped, into a real headquarters building for us. But I think most importantly, well, first I want to thank the Chamber for the award. But the real reason I came here today, and the mayor's received a letter and the city manager has before, but some of you aren't aware, and I want to say to the Commission that the cooperation that we got from city staff was so above and beyond what we expected. It made the job a really easy job to do. And I'm all around the Tampa Bay area involved with a lot of different organizations. And when I tell people what a great time we had building this building in Tarpon Springs, they look at me like they've seen a ghost. I mean, frankly, people just don't believe it. They expect everybody to trash city staff, Clearwater, County, you name it, they get trashed. Well, I have to tell you right here, I couldn't have had a better experience than the experience I had in Tarpon Springs. And that's how we grow the city. And we appreciate it. We have loved being here for also many years. When my dad came to Tarpon Springs, it- in 19- actually, in about 1936, he borrowed $1,000, went to New York City and started the company. But his home away from Greece was Tarpon Springs. And we expanded in '62 here, and we brought the company entirely down to Chicago in '77, and it's the best move that our company ever made. We're proud to be a company in Tarpon Springs doing business all over the world. Thank you very much.
I guess I just sort of assumed that everyone in the world knows the Cantona's family, but it's the Acme Sponge and Chamy Company for those of you who don't. I'd like you to say that. Jim, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank you for being a Chamber Partner forever.
I was- I think I was the President of the Tarpon Chamber. I think that's what you call it, Chairman of the Board, whatever it is. And I think '78 or '79, you have to check the records. It's been a long time.
Oh, good. So we have an experience when coming back.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take- just take a little bit of time to thank you, Mr. Cantona's, and the family for all that you've done for Tarpon, and we definitely thank you for the kind words that you've said about staff. We know that we have some of the best staff out, and we definitely appreciate you recognizing that fact, and we appreciate all that you do, not only for your business, but your charitable contributions towards our community's concern. So, thank you. Any public comments on this item? Any Commission comments? We will now go to item number eight, External Audit Report.
I would like to introduce Laura Brock. She's a shareholder with Mayor Hoffman and McCann, who are doing our external audit. I'd also like to introduce Laura Tatum, who's handing out some books right now for you to look over, and she is our Audit Manager. And they're going to give a report on our financial report for fiscal 2012.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Laura Brock. With me is Laura Tatum. I serve as the Audit Partner for the Audit Year for the City of Tarpon Springs and have performed the audit for the second year now as your Auditor. We're very happy to be here and to go through the results. I put together a fairly condensed package that we'll go through instead of going through the whole entire comprehensive annual financial thing. First, I wanted to thank Ari Walker and Ron Herring for an excellent job. We audit a lot of cities, and as a part of the audit in the Finance Department, and maybe just to echo the comments that you probably just heard, we ask for a lot of documents. We look at grants, invoices, cancelled checks, loan documents. I mean, there's this laundry list of information that we request as a part of the audit before we come here, minutes, loan documents. And I have to say that Ari and her department is very well organized, very well prepared for us when we come on site to go through the records and so forth, and they've been very timely with their responses and so forth. And it does make our job a little easier, although we do uncover all those stones and look at a lot of information, and they're very much aware of that. So turning to page two, we're here to discuss the scope of services. While we were engaged to perform the audit for fiscal year 12, September 30, 12, and we did issue an independent auditor's report on financial statements, which is considered an unqualified opinion, and that's the best opinion, the clean opinion that you can get for your audit. Followed by that in the CAFR is the Management's Discussion Analysis, and this is just to remind you that is unaudited. That's prepared by management. We do read it and tie it out, but we don't audit the numbers. And then following that are the basic financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, and there's some required supplemental information. Again, that's unaudited. A lot of it has to do with your pension information. And then there's the regulatory report. So we have to also issue a report on internal controls and a report on compliance because you follow the guidelines of government auditing standards, and you receive federal and state funding as well. So it's a very comprehensive audit. Turning to page three, we are required to communicate certain things with you, and that's why we're here tonight. Our responsibility is under generally accepted auditing standards, and government auditing standards require that we address these items with you. The first one has to do with changes in accounting policies. There were none that we need to report or discuss. If there were any, we would need to disclose those with you. We do want to inform you that you've implemented this past year three of the GAZB statement, 61, 63, and 65. Those are the standards that are governing the financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards. You have already implemented all three of these standards. 61 and 63 was- Sixty-one and sixty-three was not required to be implemented until next fiscal year thirteen. And GASBII statement twenty-fourteen was not required to be implemented until fiscal year fourteen. So, your department here early implements a lot of the standards. They're very knowledgeable with what's going on in the government arena relative to financial reporting. I did want to let you know that those three statements did not have any financial impact on the city's financial statements. They really had to do more with presentation, some wording within the financial statements and so forth. I did want to point out, and I did put it on the slide, but GASBII sixty-eight would be one that's coming down the road, which would be required to be implemented in fiscal twenty-fifteen. And that will have an impact in your financial statements. And GASBII sixty-eight has to do with the accounting and financial reporting for pension plans. So, where in the future, effective that particular fiscal year, the city will be required to recognize the long-term obligation for the pension benefits as a liability. And in the past, you haven't had to book that liability. We disclosed it. It's in the notes. There's a lot of schedule. And this is causing a lot, I shouldn't say an uproar, but it's causing a lot of municipalities to really take a hard look at what that liability is going to be. Because we are certain that there are some governments out there that once they book that liability, it's going to be so significant that it's going to throw their fund balance reserves possibly into a deficit situation. So, I point that out to you because you've got a couple of years to kind of look at that and analyze the numbers and kind of see what the impact's going to be before the implementation is going to be required in fiscal twenty-fifteen. Back to the slides, no difficulties in performing the audit. If there was, we would need to discuss that. Audit adjustments, whether corrected or uncorrected. What this means is there were no audit adjustments that we had as a part of the audit. Nothing came to our attention that we needed to book an adjustment. And I did want to point out again that that speaks volumes for your financial department. We audit a variety of municipalities, some of which we booked ten, twenty, thirty journal entries, which tells you that the records are mess. And to comment and report to you today that we didn't have any adjustments that we had to book tells you that you're getting accurate information timely and help you make business decisions and city decisions. So, I think that's a key as well. No, significant accounting estimates is just to remind you that as a part of the audit, we can confirm assets and we can confirm debt, but there's estimates also as a part of the audit. And we look at those estimates. An estimate, for example, would be your estimated useful life or depreciation. So, we look at the estimates that management has determined and make sure that we're reasonable with those and we're comfortable with those, and we are. Turning to page four, no disagreements with management. We did receive written representation from management as a part of the audit. Management has not consulted with other accountants other than in regards to the internal audit procedures that we're aware of. And of course, Mayor Hoffman McCann is independent relative to the city, which is a key element. Turning to page five, I just extracted some of the financial information that I'll try to go through briefly. This is a condensed statement of net position. And the first two columns are your governmental activities. The second two columns are your business type and then the totals to the far right. And it's broken out between your assets liabilities. And we have a new section in here called deferred inflows of resources. That was one of the GASBII statements that we had to implement. We are now required to break out these deferred inflows of resources and report those on the financial statements. And another one of the changes is net position. So, now we're referring it to as net position. So, if you look at the first two columns, you've got your assets liabilities, deferred inflows of resources and your net position. And looking at the first two columns to the bottom, you can see that your change in total net position didn't change much. It went from seventy-four point nine million to seventy-five million. So, you just had a very modest increase. If you look at the middle two columns, your business type activities, you did have an increase in your net position from forty-three point three million to forty-eight million. So, you had about a four and a half million increase, about ten point seven percent. And that's primarily in your capital assets. If you look at your balance sheet, you can see the numbers there. So, again, to the far right two columns, you can see on a total basis, combining both the governmental activities and the business type activities, that you had an increase of about four point eight five million. It's about a four point one percent increase in your total net position. Turning to page six, this is the condensed statement activities. And this is a very busy statement as well, but this is trying to tell us that in your function and program activities, the first part is your governmental activities, followed by the business type activities. The first column represents the expenses for all of those different line items. And you can zero in on any particular one that you're interested in. And you can see, for example, on the governmental activities, your total expenses were twenty-two million dollars. Following that across, you've got charges for services. So, these are offset by revenue that you get. Charges for services, operating grants, contributions, capital grants. And so, ultimately, you focus on the columns since two thousand and twelve. So, you had a deficit, if you would, of eighteen million dollars, or a shortfall, if you would, of just the general expenses. And this is before we record the other types of revenues. Following that is your business type activities. Now, your business type activities are all your enterprise funds. Those are water, steel, and sanitation. And they're supposed to be self-proficient, and they are. And if you look at the expense column again, you have fifteen million in expenses. And then those are offset by your charges for services. Your charges for services, you had increases in water and sewer sales, you had some rate increases. But some of the other categories, you had a decrease. For example, the sanitation fees were down and the recycling fees were down. But when you offset them all together, you see your charges for services were eighteen million, your operating grants and contributions, forty-five thousand, and your capital grants, you received the flood grants again this year. So, overall, looking at two thousand and twelve, you had a five point three million dollar surplus, which has helped to offset the others. And again, comparing that to eleven and twelve, you can see there's an improvement from eleven to twelve. Eleven, I'm sorry, ten, eleven and twelve. Ten, you had a one point three surplus. Eleven was two point seven and this past year, five point three. Now, following that down, I've highlighted a couple of numbers. The key number to look here is at the thirteen million. That's if you combine the eighteen million, which was the deficit of the shortfall from the general activities, offset by the business type activities. So, you have a shortfall still, as we speak, of thirteen million dollars, which is before we have other revenues. So, if we turn the page, to page seven, these are your other revenues, which are the general revenues for the government and the municipalities. You've got taxes, franchise fees, state revenue sharing and so forth. If you zero in on the taxes, the one number we've kind of been focusing on in the past are property taxes. So, what's been happening to property taxes? Well, you had seven point eight million in property taxes two thousand and ten. That shifted to two thousand and eleven with a four point one percent decrease. And this year, you experienced another five percent decrease, down to seven point one four nine million. Looking in the totals, however, you see that the total general revenues have been pretty constant. They've been pretty much the same. They didn't change over the years. And then if we add that total from the prior page, which was that shortfall, offset by the general revenues, you ended up in a positive net position. So, the positive net position was more favorable this year than it was last year. Last year, your favorable net position increased three point six million. This year, it increased four point eight million, which is another one point one million from the previous year. So, that's a key element to look at because other governments are struggling. They're not containing their costs. Of course, revenues are down and so you've done a good job to continue in that arena. Turning to page eight, this is just a snapshot of the general fund. The general fund seems to be the major focus where a lot of the government spends a lot of their time. And if you just look at the revenues for the general fund for the last three years, they haven't changed much. They've been around eighteen million dollars. You look at the expenditures, you see the same thing. They're about the same. It did increase this past year primarily due to retirement expenses that had to be recorded this year. And then you've got your transfers and you can see your net change in fund balance. And again, this is just for the general fund, not all the other, what we call government-wide activities. And you did have a positive increase there as well. Turning to page nine, this is just an analysis that we put together on some of your fund balances and again, focusing primarily on the general fund. So, we spoke earlier that the general fund had total expenditures of nineteen million. Well, the total fund balance in the general fund is seventeen point five million. But the key is you want to pull out what's the unassigned fund balance, you know, what's the part that's available for future operations or for the city. In your case, it's ten point five million dollars. And that percentage is fifty-four point nine percent. So, I wanted to go back and kind of see what's the trend, what's been happening. So, it was fifty-seven point seven. It dropped to fifty-five and now you're at fifty-four point nine. So, you're at about fifty-five percent, which is still a healthy percentage to look at. It's not like a twenty-five or a fifteen percent, which other governments may be facing today. And I'll turn it over to Laura as she's going to talk about the control deficiencies and the second basis.
We made it easier. Both our names are Laura, but... Easy that way. Apart from that, follow up on the prior year comments. There were two things written up in the prior year statements. One was a significant deficiency for information technology. We had noted that the city had an IT security assessment performed in two thousand and ten. And recommendations were noted in that report based on vulnerability and threats from both internal and external sources. So, in the prior year comparison of the financial report, we had recommended that the city look at those recommendations from the IT security assessment, perform a thorough IT risk assessment. And with that, do some establishing of formalized IT processes and procedures, including a disaster recovery plan, addressing backup procedures and review of backup failures, as well as recommending that a formalized process surrounding user access be established and review those user accesses at least annually. And also recommending password parameters be strengthened to a more strong complex password and changed at least annually. And then that one, if you see the slide, it says not implemented current year comment. This year, when we're doing the audit, pretty much that comment stays. There was no real change in that comment from prior year. So, again, that is reported in the current year financial statements as a significant deficiency. And I wanted to point out that there is in Florida statute two eighteen point three nine regarding the annual financial audit reports. It says that the auditor general should notify the legislative auditing committee if there is an audited entity that has failed to take full course of action of a recommendation that was included in two preceding financial audit reports. So, now this is the second time that'll be in the report. If it is not corrected this upcoming twenty thirteen year, gets reported again, the auditor general will likely report that to the legislative auditing committee. What does that mean for you all? Ultimately, worst-case scenario, you could lose revenue sharing from the state. The other one that was written up in prior year was for grant compliance. We had noted that the project managers or some of the project managers did not appear to be completely aware of the requirements for the Davis Bacon Act for construction projects. We had recommended the management consider implementing a policy and making supervisory personnel get training on that specific compliance requirement. This year, we, the training did happen for some of the employees and we did not have an issue with that. So, that was implemented and went away this year. We did have a couple of other recommendations that we discussed with management last year that were in the auditor general report in the back of the CAFR. Those were not significant efficiencies or material weaknesses. They were just merely recommendations. All of those were either implemented or are in process now. So, none of those carried forward to the current year. Moving to current year, I already mentioned information technology. It was a significant deficiency again in the current year. There were two other recommendations that again, were not material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. One of those related to bank reconciliations. Bank reconciliations were being done. They just, there was no indication or evidence of them being prepared as far as somebody signing off that they prepared them and that the review was being done. So, we recommended that both the preparer and the reviewer initial and date the bank reconciliations as evidence that it's been performed and that it's been performed timely. Bank reconciliations are critical cash control. So, that would just enforce the check and balance of forced strong controls over cash. The other one was the server room generator in access. This was actually discussed last year, but not formally written up. But it was, had not been changed this year, so we did write it up. The server room does not contain a separate generator in case loss of power for the computer systems. And also, the layout of how the office is, you have to go through the server room to get to the IT manager's office through the server room. So, we had recommended that something be done to make sure that there is power to that room if the building was to lose power. And also, I know there's renovations, I think, for the two thousand and fourteen budget, I believe, for that area. So, to make sure when the modifications are done and the layout is done, that that's taken into consideration, not to have to walk through the server room to get to somebody's office. Going to the page eleven. Every year, if a city gets federal or state grant funding, we have to do an assessment to see if they require a single audit. If there's over five hundred thousand dollars of federal or state expenditures, then a federal or state single audit is required. When that is done, we then looked at the different grant programs. We have to assess if the programs are high risk or low risk. We look at different things, like whether the grants were audited in the prior year, if there were prior year findings, if it's maybe a new program to the city that maybe people don't know much about. And then we also have different coverages that we have to reach, different thresholds for testing the amount of grant expenditures based on if the city is a low risk or high risk audit. This year, we did the risk assessment. There was over five hundred thousand dollars of expenditures for federal. So, there was a federal single audit. We audited the US Department of Justice, federal equitable sharing program. When we audit those, it's a very detailed testing, several different compliance requirements we look at. And then we also have to look at the controls over each of those compliance requirements. As a result of that testing, we had no findings. So, there were no issues with either the compliance requirements or the internal controls over those compliance requirements.
We'll be glad to take any questions or comments at this time.
I'd just like to thank you for, you know, what I consider a good explanation, a great explanation in a short period of time in terms of the information that we really need to digest. I guess, looking at the deficiency, I would just ask if you think that would make significant progress in terms of the information technology and what you noted, did you...
I think our observations were it hasn't been implemented and you need to make that a priority.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And, you know, while the percentage of our unassigned fund balance went down, the actual dollar amount went up in terms of us using, having a greater expenses. But that still went up and I'm glad for that in terms of assuring some individuals that the city is still on great financial footing, even though we've used some of the reserve to look at balance in the budget, we still have a very, very healthy reserve, I would think, in my opinion. And would you agree that this will be a healthy reserve that we have?
I would agree, yes. And sometimes the shift is because the restricted fund balances have decreased because you've used up those restrictions and that frees up money to go into the unrestricted fund balance. So, it's a juggling act, but you're right. The expenses were greater, but the unassigned fund balance increased as well.
All right. And the other one, I guess, just in talking, even though it doesn't affect us now, just to have a greater understanding of what you talked about as far as the pension is concerned is that we will have to have enough cash on hand.
Reserves.
I mean, what I say reserves is to...
Not cash, because you were just booking a liability.
Okay. Just so that we'll be able to cover that liability.
Well, it comes out of your reserves. Eventually, you'll have to pay it.
Right.
It's a long-term liability. So, you wouldn't need cash in the bank today.
No, but I'm saying that we would have to have the dollars that would be basically earmarked to cover that liability at some point in time.
Correct.
Okay. And what I do, I do thank you for a thorough report, even though it was, you know, it started off a little bad and went off and down. But in the end, I think that we have a good financial report. And the thing that I know that you noted here, I know that staff will be working hard to make sure that next year, when you launch, these items will be corrected.
We came to you last year and talked to you about it and we're here again. So, I don't want to have to talk about it next year.
And I definitely don't want you to either. With that, Vice Mayor, you have any comments?
I just want to thank you for being here this evening. And it's nice to hear that Ms. Walker and her team up there are doing a great job. We have, we put a lot of power in her hands, in their hands. And we rely on them quite a bit. And so, I feel really good that they're on our team and they're working hard for us. And I did, you know, I did have concerns like the mayor did regarding this deficiency. So, I hope that we're working on it.
And Mama, you gave me authority to make some changes and advertise for some personnel.
Right.
So, that whole purpose was to get the people in, not only with the other difficulties we've got, but also to address this concern. So, you gave me the go-ahead and we're presently advertising and working on that. So, that's the result of getting this done for next year, the item we had before, the changes and the structure of that division.
Right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Beck? Thank you. I don't have any questions. I would just say that looking forward and moving into the next year, it would be helpful to have the report prior to the presentation.
We provided the report quite a while ago. Oh, that's... Your presentation? Oh, sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
Yeah, I was actually going to say the same thing, that it would have been useful to have these numbers ahead of time. There's a lot to digest. It's difficult to know what that... Did you say you had already provided this previously?
We provided that in the first...
I'm sorry?
We provided this earlier today.
Earlier today.
These are the same numbers from the CAFR. I don't know if you all have a copy.
Do you get the CAFR?
Yeah.
Yeah, these are all the same numbers that are in here.
They came just last week.
But we can do this earlier.
Yeah, we just pulled information out of here.
And that's fine. I guess maybe my comment would be more directed to the city manager, just in terms of including something... something as part of the backup to the agenda item. I know, not just for, for us, but I know there's members of the public that review online, they review the, the agenda, and there was nothing there for this.
I think the overview, we'll, we'll make sure next year that we get the presentation of the overview of the document, original document, it's kind of big, that condenses, we'll make sure that's in your...
We'll make sure. I think last year we had a PowerPoint and we didn't bring that this year, we just brought these, so whatever works.
And then the other question I had, and it sounds like we're already in the process of addressing this, but it is a concern to see that for two consecutive years, there were comments in regards to the IT division. And I understand, it sounds like we, we already have a plan in place. I wonder if maybe at an upcoming meeting, we could have kind of a presentation to know specifically how we're addressing the concerns that were brought up. I know there are issues in regards to the server room generator access, and I'm not entirely sure if we got a thorough and comprehensive plan in place, but obviously it's going to be problematic if we see this come up a third year. I'm not sure, you know, how long it would take to have that place on the agenda, but at some point in the future, I think that'd be useful. Thank you.
Commissioner, no, no, no comment, thank you.
Any public comments on this item? Well, with that, we thank you. I definitely appreciate what the city manager said because it jogged my memory that we did make some changes as it relates to some of the staffing for the IT department and some other internal changes that I would like to say definitely that won't be on our next one.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our consent agenda. Item number nine is minutes, April second, regular session, current board, invoice second, regular session, new board, ten is satisfactory release of lees, attorney fees, Fraser Hubbard, Branch, Trash, Yakovorn, invoice number four one seven eight six, Thompson, Sizer, Gonzalez in hearing, that's invoice six nine two three eight, invoice six nine three six three, invoice number six nine three six four, award file number one three zero zero six six dash C dash JJ, electrical products through the US Communities Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement, number MA dash IS one two three zero two three four, thirteen is renewed file number one one zero zero two three dash C dash CM, banking services utilized in the city of St. Petersburg, RFP number seven zero six three, fourteen, award bid number one three zero zero four nine dash B dash TK, wastewater treatment plant and CDA, system programming, preventive maintenance and repair, fifteen, approved name change for MDT personnel to labor ready, sixteen, award bid number one three zero zero five seven dash B dash CM, vehicle accessories, general and public safety, seventeen, authorized utilization of Florida Sheriff's Association and Florida Association of Counties, bid number one four, one five dash zero six dash zero one three one tires and related services, eighteen, renewed contract number zero nine zero zero four four B, H-bags, maintenance and repair, nineteen, award file number one three zero zero seven five dash N dash TK, Allen Bradley program with logic controllers, PLC boards and associated electronic components, twenty, award bid number one three zero zero six eight dash B dash CM, water main replacement directional bore, holiday drive, twelve, authorized purchase of fuel management system through National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, contract number zero five two one zero nine, twenty-two, approved change order number one to bid number one one zero zero six three dash B dash JJ, lake tarpon, sewer phase two A and B. Anything about it I would like to pull. Any public comments on these items? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Abanther?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Fearpenny?
Yeah.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
Yes. The next item we have is special consent, item twenty-three, award RFP number one three zero zero three zero dash P dash TK, playground services, Discovery Park.
We brought this back here with a little more information. Hopefully the information to back up about what exactly is going to be done, the scope of the work and a breakdown till you see where the actual costs are in this project. This is a major playground project. If you think back to our two playgrounds, we put at Sunset Beach and we put at the Little League Field, that was close to in the eighty thousand dollar range and that was just prefab, put together materials and put up properly and safely. If you compare those to the scope of Discovery Playground and what we're going to do there, you can see while the cost seems to be high comparatively and what you see that's going to be done, the maintenance free nature of what's going to be done, the ability to have stuff that's going to last us, that's probably our major playground with all the sports activities for fifteen more years. You know, we feel we're getting a great product for this price. Tom Punch, if you have any questions, but pretty much, I think the background kind of gives the information if you wanted some more information and for everybody to look at why the cost is, is what it is. So Mr. Punch, if you, if we have any questions of the moment.
Any questions, Commissioner Larson? Thank you. I had originally pulled this agenda item because I was concerned about the, the price tag, but I appreciate the, the additional information that we've been given. I did have a couple of questions. One, it mentions in the memo for Mr. Jacobs, and then there's also a letter from, I believe, the president of, of the company. It talks about the fact that this is all custom built as opposed to prefab, and, and I guess that's part of the reason why the cost is so high. I just wanted to get an understanding if that's, if that's the way to go. I, if, if there's a reason when you're buying playground equipment that prefab is inherently bad.
Yeah, Tom Punch, Public Works Director. A lot has to do with the site itself. If we went back to a completely prefabed condition over here, you'd have additional costs on site preparation. The site's already been pre-activated there, the structure, structurally is sound, it just needs a lot of cosmetic work done to it, and of course, some, some issues with rotting and then chipping wood. But, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, in order to get the product we're going to get out of this for this price over here, if you went completely modular onto it over here, there'd be additional cost for site work would be fairly high.
Because we already have something there?
There is existing, yes.
Structurally sound?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, good, that, that answers that question. And then the other question I had, I'm not sure, Mr. Punch, if you can answer this, or if this was more for Mr. Jacobs, but I noticed only two companies bid on the RFP, and I was surprised, that's a small number. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if there's a theory as to why that number was so low.
Actually, we were quite happy we received two because the, the apparent low bidder was the firm that initially constructed the playground and we were kind of afraid that they'd be the only ones because it is custom work.
So there aren't that many businesses that you've taught, most of them...
To an existing structure, correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, I appreciate, like I said, the additional information being provided. It's an important project. As I said the last time, this was on our agenda. My boys play at that playground. It's, it's an important project for the entire city. I just wanted to make sure that we're getting what we should get for that price tag. Thank you very much.
Any public comments on this item? Any other commission comments? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Abanther?
Yes.
Mr. Fearpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
And Archie.
Yes. Item number twenty-four, clarification of award of RFQ number one one zero zero eight eight dash S dash JJ, guaranteed energy savings performance contract. You awarded this, but we need to make a clarification of some information that you got. This information doesn't change our recommendation, recommendation for approval, but if Tom and our representative from Ameresco will come explain some information so we know before we go forward that everybody's got the information on this, on this, this item.
Tracy Galentine with Ameresco, and we appreciate your vote of approval for us to proceed back in March. However, there was a commissioner that asked a question about the guaranteed energy savings, about we have confirmed and we guaranteed to the city that this energy project will save at a minimum ninety-one thousand dollars a year. If it doesn't, Ameresco will pay that difference. But there was a question about whether if we were to go out of business, is there a bond in place? And when I answered the question, I was talking about a payment and performance bond as it applies to construction, not a bond for going out of business. Our analysis and questions to various companies to question whether there is such a bond that one could purchase, the answer is absolutely no. You can't assure that one will not go out of business. However, Florida statutes do provide the guarantee as we have to the city that says we will meet these annual savings. Again, if we do not, we will write a check for the difference. Does that help to explain? But the bond, there is no bond that can assure you, unfortunately, that any company will not go out of business.
Again, we want to make that clear before we went forward, since that wasn't, it still doesn't change our recommendation and our strong recommendation to go forward and get this going, but before we move forward, we want to bring that information back to you.
Do, anyone have any additional questions, the senators, or Commissioner Larson?
I'm just curious from a procedural standpoint with this agenda item, are we, is this something we're going to be voting on? I mean, we already voted to enter into the...
What, what you would do if you're not happy with it, you may vote, you may direct to rehear it, if you're not happy with the explanation, if you want to go back and revisit it, then what we would be asking here and to get the consent is, is do you want to go back and review it again with this new information? Otherwise, we'll move, you voted to move forward, but we weren't going to move forward until we clarify this. So unless this concern June would change your mind or you vote on the project, then we wouldn't.
It's, it's my belief that ba- based on the information that we've been provided, that Ameresco is a financially sound company. I'm not interested in revisiting this at this time. If that was a motion, I'm second.
I don't know, any public comments on this item? I, I'm not sure we need a motion, but we can go ahead and go through that. I think it's basically, it consists of that, we think that Ameresco is going to do a good job and, you know, we can move from there. But since we do have one, we can have a rough reflect that we would like to proceed with Ameresco, so with that, if you run for roll call?
Mr. Abanther?
Yes.
Mr. Fearpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
And Archie.
Yes. Thank you. We'll look forward to working with you. Item number twenty-five, net of interest number one three zero zero five five dash R dash JJ, optimization to proceed with RFP for redevelopment of city property, five oh one South Walton, nursing home property.
Ms. Lemon is here, but I'll go ahead and take it unless you want to come to ask you. Basically, we put out the letters of interest and we've got some letters of interest that are very viable. Because of that, it's time to, you know, go out and get their formal proposals and requests to do. So what this is asked is to move forward to the next process and obviously, instead of just a letter of interest, have them, have the companies that bid on any other ones, give us the firm proposals of what they're all for the property. At that point, you can look at them and decide if there's one favorable to go to or, you know, you don't want to go to them and stuff. But there's significant interest there and, you know, there could be some substantial dollars for that property. So, so we would say the interest is there, we need to go out and get the formal proposals and so you can make a true decision, what you want to do with that property.
Thank you. I just think first is that, you know, I, I definitely can hold on to this support going forward, but I will say that, you know, even though we did have some interest, I would hope that, you know, nobody thinks that we, we don't have the right to, after the RFP, not accept it. We don't get what I think is a fair offer for those, that parts of land, one and no obligation to, to move ahead. So I'm hoping that anybody that would submit a RFP would do so with understanding that from my perspective, we need to have something that we can definitely sell to our citizens that this is a valid reason to move forward for the property's concern, or I would think that we need to just hold on to it till we get a bid offer. So that's my thoughts as to what's that's concerning, you know, with that, I don't know, Commissioner Larson, you start that?
I ju- no, just from my own, my own clarification, is this for selling the property or just... Yes, for selling it. But we would be interested in what they're, they're going to do with it and make a decision based off that, not, 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 not just off the, the actual property value of it.
Right. It'd be price, it'd be what they're going to do with it, it's going to be the timeframe they're going to be able to do with it. And again, we would look at those and see if that's something we want to enter, or again, keep the project for fifty years later, a couple of years when we think we'll get more, whatever. It all depends on what you think about the projects submitted and if that's where you want to go. But gel the please, complete discretion, it'll be more than just price to, again, what is it going to be, their timeframe. We don't want an empty piece of land sitting there for five years, so there would be timeframe constraints in there, what they, you know, what they would have to build or reverse and pause or to go back, all those things would be involved. And this is their chance to, you know, give us a firm offer and we'll evaluate and see if we want to accept one of them or accept none of them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpe?
Thank you. Yeah, I would just say that I wholeheartedly support moving forward, although when, as we do report and we do get the proposals for the project, I would just say that as we review those, me personally, I would look for more so of a quality project versus what we may get monetarily for the property. So I'm looking forward to moving forward and seeing what kind of projects we could potentially have there.
Any public comments on this item? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Abanther?
Yes.
Mr. Fearpenny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Miss Flattery?
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-six, approve additional services authorization number one to RFQ number one one zero zero three nine dash S dash JJ Sponge Dock Improvement Project.
This would be the second of the three phases. This is, obviously, we've been in the conceptual process of working with the public, building conceptual models and, and what we want to look at. The commission looked at them, there were some items, they identified from all of the eight or so items that were some of their priority items. In this document, you see that, that we're thinking those four items can be brought in for the, you know, for somewhere near the amount of money that we have in the penny fund for it. But to know that, we have to go to phase two, and that's actually doing the construction diagrams, the, the meat of the material of preparing the documents for somebody that actually did on the build, and that's the next phase of this process. And we've negotiated a therapy that's in line with other projects, what, you know, the percentage of the projects for it. So this would be to actually, actually design the project so it can go out to bid, we can get bidders to bid for it and see how much it's going to cost. And I think the plans are to bring those back to you. They're almost with the conceptuals, they're probably at almost thirty percent now, so I believe it's sixty percent and ninety percent, we're going to bring them back. You remember Jan, yeah. So when you approve, we're probably close to twenty-five or thirty with the concepts. Now, we get down to the actual drawing of the infrastructure, the stormwater, all those things, we would bring those back in phases around the sixty percent mark and then the ninety percent mark. You would see those to be able to talk about them, they can change, just look at them, see what you see until we get to that final process. So we're acting to move forward in that phase, so we have the documents to put out the bid and actually find out that we can get, you know, what we can get for the price.
Any questions for the city manager?
Commissioner Tarpe?
Thank you. Just, just some clarification from a conversation that I had with the city manager earlier in the week. Two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars is coming from the one point three million dollars that we had already approved for the project.
Yeah.
It's not additional money.
No, it's not additional.
I just thought that that was important to clarify for the public. Other than that, I would just say I'm happy to see that we were able to incorporate the transient boat slips and docks into the project. I knew that was something that was a little bit of a variable, whether or not we were going to be able to afford that with our budget. So I think that that's something that's going to be positive, a positive... So I think that that's something that's going to be positive, a positive addition down there. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any public comments on this item? If you have one, please tell them, state your name, address for the record, and you will be given up to four minutes.
Athena Sardulia, six-thirty-four East Orange Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. And I've been up here before, so I think most of you know me. I'll keep my comments brief. I'm glad Commissioner Tarpen asked that question because I was also wondering about that. I just want to state that I think it's a lovely project and if we're anywhere else in the city, I would probably be supporting it. I feel it's not in keeping with the historic nature of the sponge docks and the sponge dock area brings in most or a lot of the revenue of this town. I've taken kind of a man on the street poll of my customers and they see no benefit in this street improvement. I'd love to see these money spent somewhere else in Tarpon Springs, any of the other lovely venues that we have, Craig Park, Sunset Beach, et cetera. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any other public comments, come, state your names, address for the record, and you've been given up to four minutes.
My name is Nicole Edhenderson and I live at twenty-one oh-three Harbor Watch Drive and I'm a lifelong resident of Tarpon Springs and I grew up on the sponge docks. So like Athena, I am, it devastates me to, you know, to think that we're going to make the sponge docks look like they're kind of beach. The docks are what lure people to Tarpon Springs. And why we want to renovate instead of restore a historic site is just, it blows my mind. I've visited so many historic places, Williamsburg for example, and people love the idea of stepping back in time. And we're not giving them that. And that's why they come to Tarpon. And you need to really rethink, you know, the whole approach for the sponge docks. Because we're just going to be some slick commercial venture. And what distresses me is that when a lot of you run for these public offices, every idea we throw at you sounds great, then the minute you get elected, they're not so great. So think about what you're doing to the docks because you're changing the character of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you. Any other public comments? With that, shall we entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Turepini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number twenty-seven, award bid number one-three-zero-zero-five-one-dash-B-dash-JJ Lake Tarpon Sewer Phase Two B. Again, this is just brought to you surely for the amount of money, the six-hundred-and-thirty thousand. This is our, this is our continued efforts to provide sewer and get rid of the subject things that were strongly affected in Lake Tarpon. So again, this is strictly on there, not on consent on here because of the amount of money. Just for the reference, could you share where the funding is coming from? The funding is coming from the, the smaller, the sewer line, it's not, it's coming from the Smarter Sewer Fund. Any public comments on this item? See, and then shall we entertain a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Turepini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number twenty-eight is award bid number one-three-zero-zero-four-six-dash-B-dash-JJ South, Justin Avenue Stormwater Improvements. Mr. Robinson, I can just say this is one that a lot of us has been looking for, for a long time, especially from thirty-two or thirty-three years ago when I used to watch my fellow police officers that were rookies, not from here, wash out in that area and laugh at them when they're doing the stuff. This is something that for the thirty-three years I've been working for the city, that's been a major problem. So Mr. Robinson has got the less than a minute preview of this is, and again, this is on there because the amount of money, this is probably one of our major stormwater projects that we've been waiting for, for decades.
Yes, sir. I'm Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. We're requesting orders, construction contract for the rehabilitation of existing stormwater system between, on Justin Avenue between Lemon Street and Tarpon Avenue. This, as the city manager said, this is one of our highest priority stormwater improvement projects that consists of elevating and reconstructing the existing brick street or remain a brick street. It involves multiple stormwater infrastructure upgrades and enhancements to that area, some utility lines, relocations, and removal of two oak trees, which has already been approved through the approval process by the board. We estimate about a six-month construction period, though that's not finalized yet until we get in, to work out the details with the contractor. And we intend to have a public meeting with the contractor present to address concerns from local businesses and or residents before we start construction. Questions?
Any questions for the roll call? Commissioner Tarpen?
Thank you. Mr. Robertson, I believe I've asked you this question before and unfortunately, I think I know the answer, the two large oak trees that are to be cut down, is there any way to avoid that?
No, sir. Unfortunately, there isn't. We looked at all different kinds of ways to reroute the storm system and get the water off Tarpon Avenue and into this new system. There was just way too many conflicts, we have to take them out.
So I'm assuming that in the back of it says minor landscape and we'll replace those trees with two large, or two small oak trees?
Well, we can't replace them with oak trees because of the root system that will, long-term, maybe not thirty years down the road, we'll have some conflict with the utilities, the infrastructure we put in. But we have some different trees that the Arbor's has approved that don't have quite the root structure that the oak trees do, so we'll be able to put something else back there.
My other question would be upon completion, if we have another hundred-year storm and a rookie police officer fled his car, are you willing to be held accountable?
Get out and swim.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, just for curiosity, with the highest bid being over, over one million and the one we're taking around five-eighty-five, what's the difference in that? I mean, is it just what they came in at? Is there any difference in quality or just kind of stuck out to me as being the lowest and the highest bid?
I couldn't really tell you without looking at the details of what those bids are. You notice the first four bids are within a hundred thousand dollars overall, within the ballpark. I would say maybe those last few were outliers. I don't really know exactly what caused those to be so much higher.
Any additional questions?
No.
Any other public comments on this item? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Turepini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number twenty-nine, renew contract number zero-eight-zero-zero-three-one Fuel Diesel and Unlet It. Again, this is strictly on there for the monetary amount. This is continuation of the contract with Tarpon Springs Company. So we're just asking to renew this again, no reason it's on special consent, it's for the amount of money it is. Any questions on this item? Any public comments? Shall we entertain a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Turepini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Item number thirty, request to sell administrative lien on Lane four-four-six, Breland Street.
Yeah, I think I can cover this pretty quickly. The request is brought by an attorney representing Resurgent Mortgaging Service. The property is four-four-six Breland or Breland Street. This arises out of two code enforcement violations, one in two thousand and eight and the second in two thousand and twelve. The violation in the first case was an overgrown property in a green pool and the second instance was a deteriorated pool cover and a damaged fence. The amount of the fine or lien on the first code enforcement violation, the principal is seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars and with the added interest, et cetera, goes up to eighty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The second violation, which was a brief repeat violation, the principal amount is four hundred dollars and the total is four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eighty-five cents. The amount being offered to settle this is five thousand dollars plus is an outstanding utility lien of two thousand nine hundred and forty-three thousand, fifty-nine cents and they've offered that. Fundamentally, what happened here is this property was owned by a couple, they went into bankruptcy. The conditions arose and the first code enforcement lien started running. That was in two thousand and eight. Then in two thousand and nine, the Bank of New York filed a foreclosure action and a notice of lis pendens on the property and that took forever for some reason. The city was dismissed, we were, originally in the case, we were dismissed from the case. And the bank finally didn't get, tried to not get a certificate of title until February twenty eighth, two thousand and thirteen. While the property was in foreclosure, is when the repeat violation occurred for a brief period of time. The administrative costs, I guess there's a clerical area here, I totaled it to be nine hundred and seventy dollars, but my secretary got one thousand and fifty dollars, I think I'm right. The real issue here is whether we can get anything off of it. There, by the way, there's a pending sale of a property that is imminent. The second violation occurred after a notice of lis pendens had been filed, therefore the lien, we don't really have a lien for that amount. The lien began running on the first violation before the notice of lis pendens was filed, therefore we have a lien that's good. But the issue is whether the city's lien has priority in the foreclosure. There's a Florida statute that, the priority of liens and mortgages goes by the date of the lien and mortgage, thus a prior mortgage is, comes first before a subsequent lien. We have an ordinance that says code enforcement liens are superior to all other liens or interests. There's a case pending in the Florida Supreme Court, whether that's true or not. There's a, one court has held that, a more recent opinion has held that the statute controls over municipal ordinance, there's an older case that tends to support the position that the, that the city can pass an ordinance establishing a priority of a lien. I believe that the Supreme Court's going to agree with the Fifth District Court of Appeal, which means that the bank's mortgage is superior to our lien. Given property values, there's, I don't think the amount of the, the amount of the mortgage clearly is greater than the value of the property. So there won't be anything left over when we take our proper priority. So the bank is offered to pay the full amount of the utility lien plus five thousand dollars. If you recall, I think it was last meeting, Mr. Trask, my partner, has sort of calculated that that's nuisance value to a bank and not have to go back to court to show that they win. So my recommendation is that we accept the offer, that's probably as much as we can ever, we'll ever get, and keep the offer, offer to settle, remain open for ninety days. That'll facilitate the property getting to the hands of a responsible property owner.
Anyone have any questions for our attorney? None, no. Shall we entertain a motion?
Move to settle for the amount offered. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Turepini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Next we go to orders and resolutions and we're going to move up item number thirty-four, which is budget resolution. Now, when you're taking a, Mr. Walker?
Let me find it and read it.
Attorney's got to read it first. Yeah.
You threw me a curve ball here now.
You can hit it.
Oh, here, twenty thirteen oh-three. Resolution, twenty thirteen oh-three, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving, no?
No.
What am I looking for?
Twenty-three, twenty thirteen twelve.
Twenty thirteen.
Next one behind oh-three.
Here we go. Resolution twenty thirteen twelve, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twelve, thirteen. That's the first and only reading of resolution two thousand and thirteen dash twelve, I thought alone.
This is a relatively short budget resolution. The primary reason for this is to put into the budget the numbers that we need for the water and sewer project. And we could not do this when we originally approved the budget last fall because we didn't know what the numbers were going to be for the bond issue. So that's one of the main reasons for doing it. We also had stormwater projects that turned out to have an unexpected expense on Live Oak and Safford. I guess it was the board that wanted to go on with the budgeted stormwater projects and in order to do that, we have to do a budget resolution to provide the money in the budget. So that is another item that's covered. We approved last fall a change order for Chesapeake Drive, the re-bricking project and there's forty thousand dollars for that. And finally, we are dividing our combined water and sewer impact fund into two separate funds. We're leaving sewer in the existing Fund four oh-three and putting all the water assets and money into Fund four oh-eight. This is to make the accounting for the impact funds easier to have them separated. What's involved now is money that we get for sewer impact fees that are being financed or water connection that comes up and in some cases, they're much more rare than sewer where somebody has to pay a water impact fee. It is generating a lot of time to keep these separate. We have to make sure that money that's collected on sewer impacts goes to sewer projects and what's from water goes to water projects. So we decided to streamline the accounting, that it was easier to create a second fund and separate them. We still have the water and sewer operating fund and that is not a problem. These combined funds were created years and years ago and with the different projects that are going on now, we were just trying to streamline the accounting and not have to do so much every month to untangle these things. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Walker? Any public comments on this item? Shall we entertain a motion? Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Turepini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Would now go to item number thirty-one, resolution twenty thirteen dash sixteen, application thirteen dash zero four, site plan for construction, expansion of wet and dry slip marinas for property located at six-oh-one Roosevelt Boulevard.
Yeah, these next three items are quasi judicial, Madam Court, party of thirty-three, so I'll tell you when to start type. So I'm going to cover the quasi judicial procedures first. This applies to all these quasi judicial hearings. These are quasi judicial proceedings where the commission acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. It is not the commissioner's function at the hearing to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. The commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances to make a legal decision regarding the application before. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issue. If that evidence demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant by the same token if the confidence- By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria set forth in the ordinances, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There's an established procedure that will be followed at this hearing. Uh, all witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their names and, names and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will go first and present its evidence. The applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then, uh, give whatever case, uh, the applicant cares to present by testimony or witnesses or documents. City staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine any applicant's witnesses. At that point, members of the public opposing the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application have the same opportunity. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. Uh, the applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary and present any necessary rebuttal evidence, after which city staff has the same opportunity. Following this, the commission will consider the matter and commissioners may ask questions of the witnesses at that point in the proceeding. A motion will then be made and a vote will be taken. Turning to the first matter, um, resolution two thousand thirteen dash sixteen, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application thirteen oh four for site plan approval for the construction slash expansion of a wet slip and dry slip marina for property located in six oh one Roosevelt Boulevard, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of intermentcy, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. That's the reading of resolution two thousand thirteen dash sixteen by Title Only. Are there any, uh, ex parte communications to dispose? No. None. All right, uh, Ms. Vincent. What?
Could you spark people into the business?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody who's going to testify at this hearing or any of the, uh, other hearings, and that means stand up in the microphone and say something, please raise your right hand and take the following oath. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I have affirmations all around. Sorry, Ms. Vincent, and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is application thirteen dash oh four for Turtle Cove Marina Phase Three. Um, uh, as I think most people are familiar with the existing Turtle Cove Marina. It's been built in two phases. This is the last planned third phase, uh, of the project. Uh, it's formerly the Erickson Marine piece that sits out in the, uh, the body of water there. Uh, the plan is to put, uh, put one hundred and seventy-six dry slips and fifty-six wet slips on the property. Um, I've gone through a couple of iterations of site plans with the applicant addressing all the questions regarding parking, sanitation, sewer lines, um, things of that nature. And, um, all those have been addressed. Um, there's a long list of recommendations just to cover everything. Um, I'll go ahead and read those into the record, then I'll talk about the planning and zoning board, uh, discussion from last night. The staff recommendation is to approve the site plan subject to the following. The developer is responsible for acquiring all the jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Number two, construction plan signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed to practice in the state of Florida must be submitted within one year of the date of final site plan approval. Number three, the site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for building permit. Number four, the applicant must install bicycle rack in order to meet the parking requirements. Number five, the architecture of the buildings must be substantially similar to the style of the buildings' construction in phases one and two. Um, number six, prior to construction permitting, the applicant must satisfy the following, and this can be done during construction permitting when they submit those plans. Water and fire line must be shown on the construction plan submittal. The master mirror assembly must be shown on the construction plan submittal. The pump station must be permitted and designed to meet FDP standards and a theme of floods must be provided. Uh, D, we must provide a cross-section showing the sewers construction in the drainage pond under drain. And E, the construction plan must include the sewer force main, which has been installed, uh, without an approved permit. And all those issues have been discussed with staff. These are just precautions that we're putting in place, um, as it goes through, uh, construction permitting. Planning and zoning board did review this last night in an effort to keep, uh, Mr. State on track. We flipped this. We don't normally do that. So, apologize for not having planning and zoning board, uh, you know, minutes or things like that available to you, but they did recommend approval by unanimous vote. There was some discussions. Uh, there were no added conditions. Um, there was one, some assurances that the bicycle parking would be in usable locations. I think that was testified that one would be placed at the clubhouse and one at, uh, the island, uh, causeway. And there were some concerns, questions again about the sanitary sewer. And, uh, as I stated, they help, uh, are working with our public works folks to resolve the piping requirements. And it was clarified that each wet slip does have a pump out facility. Um, with that, I'll be happy to, uh, take your questions at the appropriate time. And staff recommendation is to approve the items presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does the applicant care to make a presentation?
Edward State, eight twenty-seven Roosevelt Boulevard, Tarpon Springs. Uh, don't really have anything to say. Uh, was here in two thousand eight. Uh, it was a three-phase project due to the economy. It took me a little longer to finish the last phase. Um, all my permits are in place with Department of Environmental Protection. Um, I feel last night I resolved all the issues with sanitary sewer and anything else with the parking requirements. So, um, I don't have anything else to add unless, uh, you all have any questions, I mean.
Let me have questions, uh, after we get the public comment. So, let me move to, um, public comment. Are there any members of the public opposing the application? Any members of the public in support of the application? Uh, does the applicant care to make a closing statement or summary?
No.
Ms. Vincent?
No.
Uh, it is appropriate for commission consideration.
Any, uh, questions for either the applicant or Ms. Vincent? Uh, the commissioner.
I don't have, thank you. I don't have any questions. I just want to say that, um, that this is a great project. Since two thousand eight, as Mr. State said, um, um, it's, it's been quite an addition to our community. And, um, everything he's done has, has been done just ni- very nicely. The whole, the whole development, I can't stress how, how nice it's turned out and, um, and, uh, I want to thank him for that. And, um, and, and adding some nice features in our community and offering some boat storage. And, and, and that also brings people into our community as well. So, um, I want to thank him for being a good neighbor to us.
That might be true as public comment, but.
Any other questions? Uh, the commissioner.
Thank you. I, I, uh, as well, I don't have any, any questions for Mr. State, but I also would like to applaud him and, and what he's done. He's truly a man that, when he says he's going to do something, he does it. Um, he's, he's fought somewhat of an uphill, uphill battle due to some extenuating circumstances of the economy. Um, but I'd like to congratulate him and thank him for his dedication to the community and his commitment to seeing a project through. And I would like to point out that next to the Sponge Docks, I would say Turtle Cove Marina is probably the closest thing that we have to recruiting a hotel or, or a resort. So, I think that we should, uh, keep that in mind and, and I'll tip our hats to him. And I would like to move for approval.
Any other, uh, commission comments? Has been a motion, uh, we have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Ray Smith Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Thank you. We look forward to the completion of the project. Uh, with that, we go to item number thirty-two A is, uh, application thirteen dash zero eight. Uh, please saw, uh, annexation of point two six, uh, acres providing for residential urban on the future land, uh, use map. And our, uh, seventy single-family residential zoning district, and this is, uh, legislative ordinance, twenty thirteen dash zero eight, annexation first reading.
Uh, C is quasi judicial.
I'll just give the staff report.
Can we do it? Can we do it together?
Sure.
Is that?
Well, yeah, I'll give one staff report and then I think individual votes on each ordinance.
Okay. Is that acceptable, just to do them all together?
Yes, sir, with me.
All right. Well, then I'm going to read, uh, there are three ordinances here. The last one, the amending zoning map is quasi judicial, uh, but we're, we'll do it all together. So, I'm going to read the three ordinances. Ordinance two thousand thirteen dash eight, an ordinance for the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing approximately point two six acres, more or less, of real property lying in the north one half of section six. Township twenty-seven south, range sixteen east, located at six thirty-five Beckett Way, providing for findings and providing, uh, for an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance two thousand thirteen dash eight by Title Only. The second reading will be held on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. This is published in the Tampa Bay Times by Title Only with a map on March second and April twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Ordinance two thousand thirteen dash zero nine, an ordinance for the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for annex property lying on the north one half of section six, township twenty-seven south, range sixteen east, located at six thirty-five Beckett Way, from Pinellas County future land use designation of RU residential urban to City of Tarpon Springs future land use designation of RU residential urban, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance two thousand thirteen dash zero nine by Title Only. The second reading will be held on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. This is published in the Tampa Bay Times by Title Only with a map on March second and April twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Ordinance two thousand thirteen dash zero seven, this is a quasi judicial one. An ordinance for the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for annex property lying in the north one half of section six, township twenty-seven south, range sixteen east, located at six thirty-five Beckett Way, from Pinellas County zoning designation of R four, one, two, and three family residential district to City of Tarpon Springs zoning designation of R seventy, one and two family residential district, providing for finding and providing an effective date. Uh, the second reading of this ordinance will be held on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. And this is published in the Tampa Bay Times by Title Only with a map on March second, two thousand thirteen and April twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Are there any, uh, quasi, uh, ex parte communications to dispose? None?
Thank you. This is application thirteen dash zero eight for property at six thirty-five Beckett Way. Uh, this is a annexation in conjunction with, um, the request for, uh, provision of utilities, either water or sewer, um, that does trigger the required annexation for properties that are contiguous to the current city boundary, which this is. Um, in order to do so, the annexation, um, when we annex, we have to also, um, apply the appropriate city land use designation and comparable zoning designation. Um, the, uh, land use designation, uh, in the county is residential urban. We have the same designation, so that will be exactly the same. And the closest, uh, residential designation, um, will be, is R seventy, uh, single-family residential, um, in, or in comp- in comparison to what the property was zoned when it was in Pinellas County. Um, the, essentially, we are decreasing the size of an existing enclave, uh, by annexing this property. Uh, we have no issues with the ability to serve the property. Um, it's already the City of Tarpon Springs Fire District. Now, it will also be served by the police. And, um, there really are no issues with the, uh, uh, from an ability to serve perspective. Um, and the staff recommendation is to approve all the ordinances as presented. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Did you address all three issues?
Yeah, I did.
All right. Does the applicant care to, uh, make a presentation? Do we have an applicant? So, if we have an applicant, but no. Okay. All right. Uh, are there any public comments? Uh, any members of the public oppose the application? Uh, any members of the public support the application? Um, I assume you have no closing argument or summary. I assume the applicant doesn't, so appropriate for commission consideration.
Any, uh, questions from this, uh, applicant? Being done, uh, for item number thirty-two A, can I get a motion?
I move for approval of ordinance two thousand thirteen dash thirteen. Second.
Roll call.
Mister twenty thirteen dash oh eight?
Have you seen the, they said the wrong one?
It, they just changed the number. Commiss- Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Ray Smith Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, item number thirty-two B, ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero nine, can I get a motion for approval? So, move now.
Second.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Ray Smith Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. And item number thirty-two is, uh, ordinance twenty thirteen dash zero seven. Do you have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Ray Smith Flattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Um, item number thirty-three, resolution twenty thirteen dash zero three, application twelve dash fifty-nine, additional use for a, uh, surface parking lot for lot C, out parcel of Anchoa River Crossing subdivision, Badaloo's Restaurant.
Resolution two thousand thirteen dash zero three, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving conditional use application twelve dash fifty-nine for a surface parking lot for lot C, out parcel of Anchoa River Crossing subdivision, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. That's the reading of resolution two thirteen dash zero three by Title Only. Are there any ex parte communications or contact?
I spoke with the attorney.
Uh, I spoke with Ms. Riley months ago. And I would just like to note that I, I did offer to, 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 uh, to refuse on myself because I, I am a resident, uh, in one five five there. And, uh, prior to my election, uh, was when this all happened, I had talked to my, I had talked to my neighbors about it be- before my, uh, my election.
And I don't think that's a conflict of interest under the, uh, the rules, and I so advise you. Um, Vincent?
Thank you. Uh, this is application twelve dash fifty-nine. This is a conditional use application for, uh, what is now being termed an employee parking lot for the out parcel C of the Anchoa River Crossings property. Um, I want to give you a little bit of background of how we got here. Um, several years ago, that property was under the WD one zoning designation. The property that Town Homes is on as well as this particular property. Uh, it was all under common ownership and, um, the city, in an interest to develop the Town Homes there, assisting in the Town Homes developed there, code was amended, the WD one zoning district was amended to allow Town Homes as a conditional use. Um, the, the WD one zoning at that time stayed on the rest of the property. And it was part of the consideration that, um, that remaining piece would remain in some type of a commercial use because at that point in time, obviously, we were losing ground with some of, losing some of our commercial property to residential. And we didn't want to continue that pattern in some of these critical areas of the city. Uh, so ultimately, you know, that project went through and the out parcel was, you know, recognized as a commercial piece of property. Um, and I do want to state for the record that under the WD one zoning, that was previously in place until two years ago, uh, parking lots were permitted use by right. When the SMART code went into place, um, not just particularly for this location, but throughout the entire community redevelopment district and Sponge Docks, the special area plan, surface parking lots are a conditional use. And the reason being is, under the SMART code, you really want to minimize the, um, the visual and aesthetic impact of the parking lots. They break up the urban fabric. So, there's additional conditions put in place to minimize that, those impacts. So, that's kind of how we got to where we are today. Um, the original site plan that was submitted, um, consisted of fifty-nine parking spaces. It was much larger than what you're seeing tonight. Um, they have revised the plan down to twenty-one spaces, which is, you know, basically a seventy percent reduction in the number of spaces that were originally presented. Um, the, um, under the standards for review, under the conformance with the Land Development Code and by, uh, association of the, uh, SMART code, um, they are required to provide a screen wall that is a minimum of three and a half feet tall up to eight feet high, built along the frontage line. So, technically, this property has three frontage lines. Um, the Athenian way, that's a private road, but still considered, you know, it's a, you know, a frontage line, along Live Oak and along, um, Hidiscus. So, they are, they are meeting that requirement, um, as well as providing buffering landscaping. We are recommending some specific additions to the buffering, uh, requirements. Um, the, um, that we recommend that there will be a six-foot wall with a stucco finished concrete cap and exterior plantings of red cedar trees, at least four inch in caliber, thirteen feet tall, fence of fifteen feet on center is more appropriate means of screening the parking lot from the Town Homes. Uh, they were proposing originally a three and a half foot wood perimeter fence, um, which was the minimal. We're really looking to buffer the impacts of the parking lot, potential impact. We're really looking to buffer the impacts of the parking lot, potential impacts to the, to the Townhomes themselves. So, that's where we want the six-foot wall and the additional, you know, the cedar plantings, which are much more substantial, um, and provide a very nice visual buffer. So, noise buffer as well, visual buffer for the residents. Instead of looking at a blank wall, they'll be looking at a nice, you know, visual hedge there. Um, um, as I stated, um, under the, you know, the compatibility or appropriateness of the, you know, for the use, um, they have since Planning and Zoning Board very dramatically reduced the scope of the project down to, you know, about a fourth of the size or a third of the size that it, that it previously was. Um, they, uh, they've provided the exterior screen wall, you know, requirements, and they're limiting the parking to employees only. Um, additionally, they will be providing, you know, it's part of the site plan, and we are recommending that it absolutely be required to provide the signalized crosswalk, um, as is shown on the, um, on the site plan for the safety of the, uh, employees that will be crossing back and forth. Um, again, under the, um, you know, adversely, going through the conditional use criteria, really no, don't anticipate any impacts on environmental or historical resources. Um, adverse impacts on adjoining property values. Um, if it's not properly screened and buffered, we think that it could have an impact, so, you know, they have met the most stringent standard that we can put there for, for requiring the screening and buffering from, from the adjacent residential. Uh, there are really no issues with the ability of the city to provide services to this property. As I stated, the, um, flashing beacon with, um, warning lights on both sides of the curve so that, because you do have, you know, a curve there, so that cars will get an advanced warning that a pedestrian may be crossing as they come around the turn, um, on, from Wolfville Lab Echelon to Hibiscus. So, that is on the site plan. Um, at the, we have seen, received some correspondence on this, and it has been included in the backup. Um, some of it's dated back in November and December, but it's date stamped when we received it in March. So, uh, I think some of it was in conjunction with the code enforcement board, but all of that is there, and largely that's in opposition to the, the request for the parking lot. Um, I have spoke, three people did speak in opposition at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting in December. Um, two residents have, uh, of the Townhomes have reviewed the revised site plans, and they seem satisfied with the changes that have been made. Not necessarily stating they're representative of the rest of the subdivision, but, uh, at least two people did come in and review the site plans with staff and were pleased with the changes that have been made. Um, the revised concept plan presented after the Planning and Zoning Board, as I said, it has dramatically reduced the scope and size of the project, provides for a six-foot screen wall and landscape along the north boundary, um, a three and a half fence along the east, west, and south sides of the parking lot with associated landscaping, and includes the signalized crosswalk. Uh, staff recommendation is to approve the revised conditional use, uh, and plan with the following condition, number one, the proposed lagoon plantings should be replaced with red cedar trees, four inch caliber, thirteen feet tall, planted fifteen feet on center, only where visibility will not be obstructed by residents exiting a scene away onto North side Hibiscus. And the red cedar tree should also be continued in that same planting pattern along the portion of the machinery wall that extends south along the east side of the parking lot. Just continue that buffering. Um, the Planning and Zoning Board, as I said, they reviewed the original site plan. They had the sixty-nine spaces. There was a lot of discussion regarding compatibility, the height and type of the street, the street screen and the landscaping, um, the needs of a crosswalk and safety issues, valet parking, um, whether actual requirements for additional off-street parking for the restaurant to meet their, the required parking needs, um, and, and some of the previous parking arrangements. I think previously they had parking across the street, um, and some of those areas have just traditionally been used as kind of like overflow parking. Um, ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Board did, uh, make a motion to deny the application, which was approved, so the motion to deny was approved by a vote of four one. Um, as I stated, they have made significant, uh, changes, reducing the impacts of the original site plan, and, um, that's being presented to you for tonight for consideration. Staff is adamant about the conditions that are on the site plan, as well as, you know, the buffering, the screening, um, as well as the, uh, the need for that crosswalk that is included on the site plan. And without that, we would not recommend approval of this. So, with that, I'll stop, and I'll answer questions at the appropriate time in the public hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Charlotte, are you representing the applicant?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Herb Elliott, local attorney, representing the Valley Who Grill. Uh, we have three experts testifying tonight. Uh, Chris Fergal, the manager of the restaurant, John Landon, the engineer, and also Renee Vincent. She's our expert. We adopt her recommendations in full, and she is certainly qualified as such. And, uh, my client has no objection to any of the conditions, and at the appropriate time, he will state that. So, if I may begin with our experts.
Okay, could you state your name, please, sir?
My name is, uh, Chris Fergal. I live at, uh, five oh four Driftwood Drive East in Palm Harbor.
And what is your current role at the Valley Who Grill?
Uh, I'm the acting, uh, general manager operator, uh, of Valley Who Grill for the, uh, Williams Zearing Trust family.
Do you own the Valley Who Grill business or property?
No, I do not.
Did you ever?
Uh, yes, I originally built, uh, Valley Who Grill in nineteen ninety-four, um, and sold it, uh, operated it for fourteen, fifteen years, sold it about six, seven years ago.
And who did you sell it to, do you recall?
Uh, there was an investment group, uh, that was, uh, there was an operator that ran for, uh, that ran the operations for him. I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of that group.
And the business there was Krabby Bill's, is that correct?
Uh, previous to that, uh, they had a place in there, I believe, called Blue Ocean or something like that, and then, uh, they failed. Uh, they had turned, the investment group had turned that property and sold it to Williams Zearing out of California, and he then put in, um, uh, the, uh, uh, next operation to operate it for him.
How many, uh, current, uh, on-site parking spaces are at the Valley Who Grill, do you know?
There is, uh, forty-eight.
Is that sufficient for this particular restaurant?
No, at the time that I, uh, owned it, I also owned, uh, three lots, uh, across the street, across from Paul's Shrimp House, uh, that parked, uh, probably around seventy-five, eighty cars over.
How long have you been in the restaurant business?
I've been in the restaurant business, um, forty-five years.
And how many restaurants do you recall operating?
Uh, I've, I've opened and built a hundred and sixty-five restaurants. Uh, worked for large companies, General Mills for fifteen years. Uh, opened restaurants all over the country. Uh, I currently own Ozona Blue and City Fish and Valley Who Grill in, in Game Zone.
I think Chris is qualified as an expert in the area of restaurant management, and I'd like to tender in that capacity. Uh, getting back to the facts of the Valley Who Grill, when you operated the Valley Who Grill, you say there was some off-site parking?
Yes, uh, I, after, uh, originally opening up, we were so busy in the beginning, I stood on the parking lot and said, you know, what are we going to do? We're not going to be able to make it. People were pulling in a lot and leaving. Uh, across the street, there was three lots for sale. Uh, I approached the bank, and, uh, they were in foreclosure, and I had bought those, uh, pieces of property, used those for off-site parking. And actually, we left them open so that the public could park there also.
In your opinion, is it necessary to have some additional off-site parking for the Valley Who Grill to survive?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Zearing, uh, had bought that property at a, at a high price, and I believe his, his mortgage is running around seventeen thousand a month. At the current, right now, you can see people pull into the parking lot, it's full, and they leave. Uh, so, he's probably doing about, I've, I've gotten the business backup to about double what it was doing when Krabby Bill's was in there, but they were doing absolutely nothing. Um, and right now, currently, um, they're probably doing half of the business that I was doing when I, when I was there.
It might help the board to, to explain how you got involved in managing the Valley Who Grill recently.
Um, I had, I was on the way up to, uh, Sponge Docks, uh, to go to a restaurant. I hadn't been up in the area for a while, and as I drove by the restaurant, I noticed that all, the one whole side of the building was rotted, uh, all the boards were off of it. There was, um, air conditioning, uh, covers were all rotted away, uh, dead bushes and trees all over the property. The property was in bad shape, and I hadn't seen the property in about a year. And I, I looked at it, and I says, you know, I, it was the first restaurant that I owned personally in Florida. I, you know, I had some love for the area here. I know a lot of people in this area. I'm looking at the building, and it's not what it used to be. It used to be a great restaurant, a lot of people enjoyed the place. I says, so I, I, I called Williams Zearing in California. I said, Bill, I says, I don't know you, but do you know your building is rotted away? And it was currently being operated by Krabby Bill. I says, it, it's really an eyesort, and it looks terrible. I go, I go, what are you doing over there? He goes, well, Chris, he goes, they're not doing much business. They haven't been successful. The company I had before them, they didn't do a very good job. He goes, would you be interested in redoing it? I said, well, I'm sixty years old, I work a hundred hours a week now. I'm really, I own four restaurants, and I don't know if I really want to do that. He convinced me to help him out. I did that, um, and, and I'm, uh, I'm committed to helping him get Valley Who back to where it used to be. Uh, we, we did the building, we, we got it back into its original shape. It looks great. Um, I think he's improved all the landscaping, improved the outside of the building. Uh, we've got a lot of guests coming in here. People love the, the restaurant, love the food, but there's just not enough volume there now, and, and it's, a lot of it has to do with the parking.
So, what would you do, what have you done to resolve the parking problem?
Well, uh, Mr. Zearing, actually, uh, um, brought it to my attention, and he goes, you know, there's a, an auction going on behind a piece of property. It's been for sale for quite a few years, right behind the restaurant. That would be a location that would be nice if we could pull from one parking lot into the other one and, and have additional, uh, uh, off-site parking there. And, uh, so I approached, um, this young lady here up in, uh, up in the office, and, and, uh, she said, well, you'd have to have it approved, but it is possible, because it is, it was commercial at one time, it is possible to, to have parking. I told him about that, uh, he said, well, let's, the auction was going, getting ready to go on. He goes, let's purchase the property and, uh, see what we can do as far as parking goes.
And the property was purchased at auction on, uh, August thirty-one last year?
Correct.
And that was an auction, uh, for the public, right?
Yes.
And that was on the site of the property, is that correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
Have you ever parked any buses or allowed any buses to park, uh, for the Valley Who Grill at that location, talking about?
No, absolutely not.
The buses that were there would just park there because the bus driver wanted to park there, and you had no control, correct?
Well, whenever there's any events down on the Sponge Docks, there's people that drop people off for the different events, they park everywhere. Um, I'll be honest with you, I'll be inside getting ready, uh, to open the restaurant up, and if there's an event down on the Sponge Docks, I'll come outside. My entire parking lot will be filled from people that have just parked on it and walked on to the Sponge Docks. So, I have no control, you know, where people park.
Ever heard the term destination restaurant?
Uh, sure, yes.
What is that?
Um, it's, it's what I consider us right now. We're, we're not on US nineteen, we're not on a big highway. We're a destination location. They actually have to intend on coming to the restaurant actually to get here, unless, of course, during tourist season, there are some extra people around. But, uh, yes, I consider this a destination location.
Have you reviewed the Planning and Zoning Staff Report?
Yes, uh-huh.
Do you have any problem with any of that?
No.
I have no further questions.
Could this witness be excused?
Okay, I have Mr. Landon here. He's a professional engineer, great renown.
Success is good.
Okay, any questions on Mr. Landon? He's here to- He has the board. And we brought him here at great expense, so he may still talk for a while, John. What'd you like to say?
I don't think they want to say anything.
Uh, they get to ask questions after one of the public comments.
Well, let me ask a few if I can. You prepared the site plan, did you not, Mr. Landon? You're a professional engineer?
Right.
Testified in court as an expert, right?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you think to discuss what this project entails?
We have, uh, surface treatment and driveway access. Yeah, basically, the twenty-one, uh, twenty-one parking space, overflow parking lot designated for employees only. Signage, uh, to that effect, uh, crossing lighted with flashers to enable, um, you know, crossing from the existing Valley Who, uh, restaurant. Storm marks can be handled, um, by Little Swale, just the east of the project. It's proposed to, um, use crushed shell, some type of pervious surface as opposed to billings or per asphalt. Um, met, met all the tree coats. I think we're filling, or we could move, but I think we've got two palms in the way of the entrance. Um, every other tree, I think, we're saving.
What percentage of the area is for the parking?
Without looking, it's about ten, ten and a half percent, probably, ten point seven.
Sure.
I, I think it's, uh, I can look it up, but it's, uh, roughly ten, ten and a half percent.
Oh, the total surface area of the property is for the parking lot at this time, right? Is that your thing?
No, out of the total area of the property, about ten point five percent is used for this parking.
Thank you. And the driveway access for the property is from Live Oak Street, is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, no other access points, just Live Oak.
No further questions of Mr. Landon.
And Ms. Vincent is our expert. And, of course, you know her qualifications, and my client has reviewed the report, and we thank them very much, the, the planning staff, for their, uh, very thorough report. And my client has reviewed it and approved it in its entirety with some reluctance. They, it was, we talked about the need for a public crosswalk across Live Oak Street, lighted. There's no other public crosswalk that's lighted like that except the one at Tarpon Avenue and Pinellas Avenue, Tarpon Avenue and Stafford, in O'Trae. But they're willing to do that because the city staff has asked for it, and my client has gone ahead and approved everything in their, uh, report. Uh, I do have some comments of my own. Whether it's expert opinion or not remains to be seen, but, uh, I would like to say a few things, if I may, Mayor. And I hope I won't have, should be about four minutes, is that all right? Maybe longer?
I'm assuming it addresses the topic under discussion.
Yes, I will, yes. We certainly respect the neighbors' concerns. Uh, tried to meet with them for several months without success. Uh, we're hoping, we are hoping to be able to meet with them and see what their problems were. Uh, I did talk to one of the neighbors who did sign the petition, Ms. Jane Jurgensen, and she's authorized me to state that she no longer has any objection. So, I don't know if that's one of those two that went to see Renee or not, but I doubt it. So, there would be a third person that has no objection. Uh, the letter was dated in November before the revised site plan. This is a lot more simplified, a lot less intensive use. Uh, in their letter, they, they referenced that, uh, this is their front yard view. Uh, it's a very, it's a well-written letter, and I commend them for that and for making their comments known to the city boards that it was addressed to. I didn't see it addressed to the city commissioners. Uh, but it is not their front yard. It is owned by Mr. Zearing. He's the owner of the property. And your job, as you well know far better than anybody, is to balance the needs of the neighbors with the needs of the private property owner. The staff has done that, and we urge that you, uh, approve their, uh, recommendations. Uh, I believe Renee stated that the Cooper Brothers, when they were here, uh, from England, they got a conditional use to build their particular development, and just as we are asking for. I think the twenty-one spaces is minimal. Ten percent of the total area is going to be used for the parking lot. There's a substantial, uh, wall, a six-foot wall. There's a lot of trees. It's a very minimal use, and, uh, I would urge that the board would pass this resolution. Uh, I would point out also that I've, uh, talked to Ms. Vincent about the permitted uses in the particular district. In the T five D district, which is property zoned for, these are some of the permitted uses, not conditional uses. Shopping center, hotel, inn, bed and breakfast, restaurant, bus shelter, movie theater, parking structure. So it could be a lot more invasive use than a twenty-one space parking lot. I went around the Sponge Docks recently to see how many restaurants we have and I was surprised at how many. Counting a few on alternate nineteen in the Sponge Dock area, there are twenty full-service sit-down restaurants currently in operation in the city. Not talking about vacant restaurants, not talking about bakeries or fast food or candy stores. It's a very substantial part of our community, as we all know, and it's important for the viability of the Sponge Dock area to continue to have the Valley who grill there. Back in the day when I was more active, involved in real estate development and management and, and being attorney for various shopping centers and so forth, uh, this is not expert testimony by any means, but I learned from experience that what a, whenever there's customers or clients that are walking, they need to have anchors at the ends of the place that there's, uh, let's say, for the, for the shopping center or strip center, or in the case of the Sponge Docks, you need to have strong anchors on each side. For that reason, for example, you have a Publix on one side and a Panera on the other, the national chains, and then the locals are in the middle. Same thing with, let's say, uh, Walmart and Staples. You have the anchor chains on the ends and then the locals, the individual stores, uh, in the center. Similarly, at the Sponge Docks, I think it's the same kind of principle. You need to have a strong anchor at each end. And this is a part of the anchor at the east end of the Sponge Dock area. And for the sake of this community as well as for the sake of the Valley who grill, I would wish the board to pass this resolution so this restaurant can stay vital and viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any members of the public, um, who oppose the application? Uh, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
Marie Obar, one twenty-nine at Tenian Way, Tarpon Springs. Um, I'm a resident of Encro- uh, River Crossings and I represent the board, uh, who I believe all of the board and many of our, um, owner residents, uh, oppose this. Um, first of all, I would like to say that there were a lot of inconsistencies in what Mr. Frigali, uh, said. Um, secondly, I would, um, uh, address the board, the commissioners, and, and ask you to review his need or his saying the need for this in order for the restaurant to survive. It started out to be much larger. Uh, it was done without, uh, approval and that's, that's another story and I'll, I'll leave that. But he's now asking for twenty-one spaces for employee parking. I hope you're aware that the city parking lot is less than a football field away from where they're asking to put this parking lot. I walk around the neighborhood and around the town all the time. I've counted the number of steps. It's two hundred steps from the city parking lot entrance to where this entrance, proposed entrance to this parking lot will be for the sake of twenty-one people. Last weekend, parking lot at Live Oak and Stafford, the city parking lot was very active because there was a craft show, an art show done in Sponge Docks. Lots of people parked at the city parking lot, walked right by Valley who's restaurant and, uh, could have been invited into the restaurant with proper signage. So I think there used to be alternatives, even though the restaurant's been there for a long time. There used to be alternatives and I think there still exists alternatives, uh, rather than putting another parking lot where it's very close to the city parking lot. I also would remind you that in the past few months, in the meetings that I've listened to here, the city commission and the city planning board has discussed the city, city of Tarpon Springs plans that conform with the CRA. And what you have said is that you want connectivity, walkability and drawing people towards Sponge Docks, but we want this to be a walking city. So we want to put another parking lot in? I really don't see the necessity of that when there's already, uh, a viable alternative. So the owners of Encro- Encro River Crossings feel it's terribly irresponsible for the commission to approve this project and we ask you to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, are there any mem- other members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, does, um, the applicant careably closing argument or summary? Represent any rebuttal evidence?
Yes, I'd like to in response to the comments. Chris, can you come forward, please?
In your endeavor to find offsite parking for the Valley who grill, uh, were you successful?
Uh, no, uh, they said that, um, they used to lease part of a lot across the street. It was three thousand dollars a month, which, you know, on top of the seventeen thousand dollar, um, uh, payment every month, it's, it's just impossible for the restaurant to pay that, uh, to be able to use the lot across the street. Uh, we looked at purchase of other lots across the street, none of them are for sale that are close enough that we could use. Uh, that one is very convenient. A lot of our guests are elderly people. They're not going to walk all the way back to that other parking lot. Uh, it's just not going to happen. So it's essential for that restaurant, uh, to have this parking, um, and, uh, I, I don't think it'll exist without it.
Did you try, uh, talking to any of your competition about sharing parking?
Uh, they're not in the sharing league in most of those parking lots. They don't even let their own brothers park in those for.
Thank you very much. I have a closing statement of sorts.
All right. Six drink.
Amy, can you pop this down?
I had, hey, I gave you my only, my topic. Could I have one of those back, please?
I'm sorry, I'll share with the charge.
Here, you can have mine. I'm familiar, I'm not, I'm familiar with the law.
Well, when Supreme Court, now that Mr. Yakavon mentions that, when the Supreme Court changed the rules about twenty years ago, City Tarpon Springs had the first night or hearing in this area, maybe the first in the state. And the city attorney at that time was not, had one stroke of a good idea for a change. And he asked Mr. Yakavon to be co-counsel and he sat in the back and helped the city attorney at that time because we were breaking new ground. And, uh, and related to that is the law concerning, uh, what kinds of testimony here is relevant and what kinds are not. And one thing that's not an element in your conditional use criteria is past practice, past experience, past behavior. And what also are not, I'm going to read this, uh, summary from this court decision, uh, two thousand and ten. For the record, it's Cafferns Bay LLC versus Fagan. Uh, if I may, real quickly, I'll just summarize. Lay witnesses may offer their views in land use cases about matters not requiring expertise testimony. For example, lay witnesses may testify about the natural beauty of an area because this is not an issue requiring expertise. Lay witnesses speculation about potential traffic problems, light and noise pollution and general unfavorable impacts of a proposed land use are not, however, considered competent substantial evidence. Similarly, lay witnesses' opinions that a proposed land use will devalue homes in the area are insufficient to support a finding that such devaluation will occur. There must be evidence other than the lay witnesses' opinions to support such claims. There has been no such evidence. There's been no such evidence, competent substantial evidence submitted from the neighbors. We appreciate their concerns. I think their concerns are not well-founded. And I respect the request that the board pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you, uh, have anything to say?
I just want to clarify and make sure that it's very clear on the record. When I did speak with Mr. Frigali about the ability of this piece of property to support parking, it was very, very clearly stated, and I think he'll agree with this, that it was a con- uh, it was a conditional use and was not a guaranteed deal. So I, I want to make sure that that's, there were other people in there that heard that. So I just want that, I felt like a little bit there that I got thrown out of the bus. So I'm clarifying.
All right.
No, thank, thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Ms. Vincent, uh, would you, uh, give us your credentials and qualifications for the record?
Uh, I have a master's degree in urban regional planning from Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University, also known as Virginia Tech. Um, I have eighteen years of professional planning experience and I have been a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners for sixteen years.
Thank you. Um, at this point, it is appropriate for commission consideration.
Thank you. Uh, before, looking at entertaining emotion, I just want to make sure that we can clarify some things and that maybe ask Mr. Elliott if he could just ask a, a question with yes or no. A- and that's that the, uh, applicant agrees to all of the stipulations that have been, um, uh, recommendations that the staff has, uh, asked for.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, a- and with that, you know, I, I looked at this and, uh, and I do think that there's a balance. And I know that it was stated that, you know, it'd be irresponsible to support this, but, you know, by virtue of being here a little while, um, I remember when the zoning was changed and so that townhomes could even be built there. And, uh, some people thought it was irresponsible to allow townhomes to be built on Encro River. But, uh, because of the situation and looking at, uh, a type of mixed use as far as commercial that never really materialized, that zoning was changed to accommodate that. Now we have a situation whereas, uh, to me, we're trying to look at a balance. We're trying to look at a balance of quality of life as far as the residents are concerned, as far as the townhomes, and also trying to look at, um, what can be done there to hopefully support, uh, what I consider, um, a restaurant or business within, um, the city of Tarpon Springs, uh, that I don't think any of us would like to see it, um, go in the way of disrepair or, and close as we've seen some restaurants on Tarpon Avenue, um, close and, and never really open again. So I think that from my perspective, it's one of trying to balance this out. I appreciate everything that the, um, residents have said and, you know, uh, but I think that when we're looking at it and, and some of the residents, according to staff, and I would ask, uh, if you could, uh, again, talk in terms of the residents that might have come forward to say that after the changes and the reduction that they, they really don't have any objection?
I, I did specifically speak with two residents.
Yep.
I don't know if they were owners or just residents, renters, but I did speak with two people that lived there.
And I think that from my perspective, that's what I'm looking at in terms of a balance, a balance in terms of what's good for the residents, what's good for the businesses. And, um, from my perspective, you know, I can support, um, this, uh, because I think that, uh, there's been a number of substantial changes, um, to, uh, the initial proposal that planning and zoning, uh, didn't approve to, uh, ensure that that was adequate compromise, including, um, the, the crossing, um, light that's there. So for me, that, those are the comments that I have. I don't have any, uh, additional questions of any of the expert witnesses or something. Um, with that, uh, vice mayor?
Thank you. Um, I just have one question and then I'll make my comments. Um, when it comes to our parking lot, Ms. Vincent, that's over there on Live Oak, do we, do we lock that lot in the evening, you know?
I believe, city manager? But don't, it doesn't get locked at night? Okay.
Okay. Um, well, I have to say, the way this application, um, was presented to the planning and zoning board, I don't think I would have approved it either in the beginning. Um, but, you know, reducing this, the parking spaces to twenty-one spaces, I think is the, um, is a good gesture on the owner's part. And, um, they've met all the requirements that we have asked them to meet. So all I ask that is that parking lot, there's a sign there that says employee parking only. Um, and, you know, like I said, they, they've met all the requirements that we have asked. And, you know, they're, they are showing that they can be a good neighbor of the community. So, you know, I, I, like I said, I just want to make sure that we have a signage put up there. Some sign is up put up there that says employee parking only. I don't want it to start, people to start pulling it over there, um, or using it for valet parking or, or, you know, and become a mess the way it is currently. So at this point, I would support this application.
Let me step up in.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Vincent? Mr. Elliott mentioned that a permitted use by right would be a shopping center. Could you confirm that?
Yes.
So assuming the shopping center was to go on that site, would there be a parking requirement?
Yes.
And how would they fulfill that?
Uh, most, either do a surface parking lot or a, or maybe perhaps a structured parking lot, but it would be onsite parking, yes.
A year from now, let's say this application gets approved and the owner of the property wants to build three commercial retail buildings. Could he incorporate the parking requirement that would be necessary for those buildings into the, maybe an expansion of the, this parking lot that they're going to build?
There would be no reason he couldn't, as long as he meets the rest of the, you know, the-
The requirements.
The physical requirements, yes.
Sure. Um, in theory, in one year from now, if things aren't working out with Mr. Frigali and somebody comes to the table that wants to demolish the parking lot and build something there, could that happen?
Yes.
Okay. Um, just for some clarification on the, the wall and the, the screening. Um, can you elaborate on the screening? I'm not sure I really understand. That's on the north, the north boundary line?
There, there actually will be, um, a, a six-foot wall along the north property line and it will extend on the eastern side of the parking lot. It will extend, um, down the ways as well, um, to provide some additional buffer. So that'll be a six-foot wall. The remainder will be, um, a three and a half foot, will be a combination of landscaping and then along the front edges, along Live Oak and along, um, Hibiscus, will have a three and a half foot screen wall or fence along with landscaping. So on the city public right of the way, the screening will be less. And actually, that's important to keep it down low there because-
Visibility.
For the visibility, exactly. So that cars can be, the people that are crossing the street can potentially see the cars coming from both directions. Um, so that's what's being required.
So on the north side and on the east side, it's a six-foot wall?
It's a six-foot wall and then on the outside of that, buffering the wall from the view of the residents will be the, um-
Cedars.
The, the cedars that will be a very solid visual screen and pretty effective actually from the time they're planted.
Right. Um, any, any lighting being proposed? The, the plans that are in the backup are a little, little small if I'm not-
We all have a requirement for lighting, so I'm going to ask, uh, what's this? Um, can you clarify the lighting, how the lighting's being addressed? Oh, it's not, it's not even being lit? Okay. I thought we usually require that, but I don't know what the, uh, the engineer addressed there.
Oh, he's listening to that, Ms. Vincent?
Sure.
Um, was there any, any discussion regarding signage?
Um, regarding the employee parking issue?
Not necessarily employee parking, but-
Or signage for-
Signage for Valley who restaurant?
Um, we did not discuss that specifically. Um, we would have to evaluate that under the sign code as to whether or not that then constitutes an offsite sign or a sign for, you know, if it's going to be employee parking only, there shouldn't need any signage that says Valley who's offsite. So that, I would have to look at that separately.
That's something that could be addressed, addressed down the road then, when they get approved. Okay. Then, uh, other than that, my only question would be, uh, the lighting. Okay. Then, uh, other than that, my only question would be, uh, the lighting.
Okay.
John Landon again. Um, our plans were basically just site grading and civil, civil stuff. It didn't address lighting, but the owner I just talked to would propose some, just low-level lighting. Just, uh, you know, for walkway coverage.
Thank you.
We typically do have a minimum lighting requirement for one and a half foot candles eighteen inches above the surface of the pavement. So, they will have to meet that when it comes to construction permitting in one way or another.
Well, there's also lighting on, uh, Live Oak, I believe.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I've got a number of questions that I wanted to get clarification on. One question I had is regarding code enforcement. It mentioned in the, um, in the backup that there was a, on November eighth, two thousand twelve, the Code Enforcement Board found the applicant violation of Sections one point four, uh, one point four one and one point four two. I'm just wondering what the status is of that.
Um, I'm going, my assumption is that they removed all, everything that was part of the code enforcement violation. I assume that they called for an inspection and have been found in compliance. So, I'm going to let, let them address that.
Yeah, I recall talking to code enforcement and there's been a significant, significant compliance issued for this property. There's no code violations currently pending.
Okay. Um, in regards to it being an employee-only lot, I'm curious how many employees work at, at any given moment? What would is the maximum number of employees?
Chris can say that though. It's twenty-five to thirty-five, depending on the time of day.
Twenty-five to thirty-five employees?
Re- related to that, um, it's, it's been stated multiple times that this is going to be an employee lot. And then when the discussion came up of, of having people park somewhere else, I, I think, Mr. Fergali, you mentioned that a lot of your customers are elderly and that they wouldn't walk all the way from that other lot. But I thought it was employees that we were actually talking about.
I was, I was speaking of the public lot. The, the Tarpon Springs public lot that they were talking about is on the other side of that. When we were talking about that particular lot, I said a lot of our elderly guests, they're not going to walk from that, from the public parking lot.
But theoretically, employees could.
Theoretically, employees could.
Okay. Um, another question I have was related to lighting. As, uh, Mr. or Commissioner Chair Penny brought up, I just wanted to make sure that if there is a parking lot there, that it's safe for the people who, who are parked there and that are, you know, exiting their vehicle. Um, I, I guess our code, Ms. Vincent, would address safety issues. Our chief coach, I don't know if you want to chime in?
The, the lighting standard is not specifically in the land development code. It gets reviewed during construction permitting with engineering. But the standard that we always, uh, require is, um, and it comes from the SEPTED is, um, a minimum of one and a half foot candles eighteen inches above the surface of the pavement. So, that's, you know, that's going to be pedestrian scale lighting essentially.
If, if it is an employee-only lot, I'm not sure, and maybe the city attorney can weigh in, like, what, what method of enforcement do we have if we were to make that an employee-only lot? And maybe a related question I would have, because I know the original plan was to have sixty-nine parking spaces, which is a lot, uh, and, and now it's been reduced, I believe, to twenty-one. Is that correct? Twenty-one?
Yes.
Um, so, a, a related question, uh, I, I'm wondering both, how do we know it's only going to be an employee lot? And then in addition to that, how do we know it's only going to be twenty-one spaces? A- a- at some point in the future, is it going to slowly, surely increase?
It's designed for twenty-one spaces. It has a wall around it. I mean, that's, you know, we're, that's, that's going to get half of the employee, you know, most of the employees off of our regular parking lot and open those for regular guests. So, that, you know, and, and they're there way before the guests get there. So, they're going to fill that up first and that way our lot's going to be open for our guests.
And then I'm wondering from an enforcement standpoint, when is the, like, is that something we're putting in this, Vincent, as a requirement that it be an employee-only lot? That seems to be part of the new plan that was not presented in planning and zoning, but what we're receiving now?
It was, uh, they have it, they have it labeled on their plan as an employee-only lot. And I would think, um, uh, with regards to the Vice Mayor's comments, I think you probably should add a condition on the resolution of approval, that it must be signed for employee parking. Um, regarding an enforcement issue, I, you know, that, you know, I, I think- Yeah, it is, it is on the site plan, you know, for clarification. I think I would like it in the resolution, the conditions of approval, that it must be signed for employee parking lot.
That there must be signage for employee only, and then what would the ramifications be if three months down the road, that sign were to be removed and, and replaced with a sign that says parking for Ballyhoo's?
Um, at that point, you're in violation of your, of your resolution, of, of your conditions of approval and we can take code enforcement action on, on that.
Okay. Um, and then the number of spaces, I, I know they're saying that the plan is twenty-one. Um, i- if people, if additional people are parking there beyond twenty-one, how, how do we handle that? Do we handle that?
Yeah, I, I don't know, you know, you won't be able to get functionally in and out of the property if people just start, you know. Now, I suppose it would be possible if you've got forty people working on a shift, they could just, and they, they can jockey cars around themselves. They don't necessarily, maybe they don't need to be able to independently maneuver. But for our, you know, we, we just have to monitor the parking lot if, you know, if it starts to decrease or increase in size and intensity, then that's a violation of the, the, the site plan itself is a condition of approval and it's being represented as twenty-one parking spaces.
Okay.
Any change to that would require a rehearing?
I, I think the, the, uh, the neighbors that, that have sent letters and, and, uh, had the opportunity to speak tonight have legitimate concerns. Um, I, I know in the letters, they mentioned, uh, noisy drunk people, uh, and obviously it can become a safety issue and, and the concern of a, you know, big ugly parking lot. Uh, also using Athenian way for ingress and egress without permission was a legitimate, uh, concern as well. Um, I think that the plan, as, as Vice Mayor said, I think that the plan that was presented to planning and zoning, um, was extremely problematic. Um, what's coming before us tonight, I think, addresses a, a fair number of the concerns and I think that's a positive thing. And I think another issue, uh, and, and Commissioner Chair Penny kind of brought this up as well. If, if we were to deny this, uh, conditional use application, they own the land. They would probably then sell the land. I'm guessing, I certainly don't know what they would do with the land, but I'm guessing they would then sell the land to somebody else that wants to do something with that land. And there are various permitted uses, um, that, that would then take place, uh, that could theoretically be more problematic for the neighboring property owners. So, I, I'm extremely sympathetic to the situation, but I, I feel like what we have here might be a positive compromise compared to what had been offered of planning and zoning, as well as compared to what could potentially happen if this is not approved. Um, that's, that's kind of where I am at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes, so, Ms. Vincent, you said there's no way we can specifically enforce that, that, that it's employee-only parking. Say they, they, they leave the sign up. It looks great, but they sort of outlaying cars in there. I know, just speaking as a resident, when, when they, when they were doing that, the traffic was a large, um, complaint of, 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 of the residents there.
I'm going to rely on the city attorney to answer this from-
The distinction between isn't, is between enforcement. We can enforce it. We just have to detect the violation. That's, that would become difficult, but there are ways. I mean, I imagine we have residents there who will come running and start complaining if they see vehicles going in and out at short intervals, you know, obviously inconsistent with parking, um-
Essentially, it would still be a violation of the conditions of approval.
Yes.
And so, we could take action on that through the code enforcement action.
Well, once, once, uh, uh, you know, some well-founded evidence comes forward, you know, that they may be violating, then there are ways to take additional measures to determine. You know, just have a police officer stand at the gate and say, "Are you an employee?"
I think with the number of people that have cell phone cameras and video cameras on their cell phones these days, it probably wouldn't take very long at all to get evidence.
I can assure you, after the part of the story that Herb left out in his eloquent questioning, he left out the whole code enforcement and putting a parking lot there that they knew. He left all that portion out and I can assure you, our police chief who values the law and a city manager who is a former police officer who values the law will be watching prudently and can guarantee you any funny business that, uh, occurs to try to go against this, we will be watching and ready to take full action with. Because when that's done to us once, we don't take too kindly to it and we make sure it's not done again. And, uh, we assure you, we'll be glad to bring that back to you for your revocation of it. Um, so, that can be assurance.
Can you run lighting please?
We can watch.
Um, can we get someone, can we get reassurance from, from the owner or the, or the, the manager that he will tell the employees, um, if it's impossible not to, uh, drive on Athenian way being, uh, it is, it is, it is, it is private property or park along there? Because that, that was, that was, that was, I think that, that was part of the resident, resident, resident complaints?
Our, our only access to the parking lot is going to be in the front. There's no reason to go down that street. Um, as other people drive down the street that have nothing to do with us, I, I can't control that. Our employees are coming to work early. They're going to park in the lot and they're going to come to work and they're going to fill the lot up before our guests get there. So, I mean, if, if I live there and someone parked, I would put the signs that say, "You will be towed."
We do.
And I would tow you. That's what I would do.
There are, there are signs, but I just thought maybe you could communicate that to them, but-
If I might add, there was an incident where a resident of the Athenian place parked on their property and the car was towed and my client paid fifty dollars to have their, this woman's car towed because it was parked there improperly. Is that correct?
We felt bad. She had a car, she rented there and she had a kid and, like, she had her car towed and we felt bad about it and we offered dinners and we offered to pay for every ten car.
And I myself parked in a reserved space. It may be reserved for the city manager. You know, it's an enforcement problem. A car is a car. And I apologize, Chief, if it's your space. I don't think it would, I mean-
If I'd have got the tow truck there, you'd have been towed.
I, and well, just in closing, I mean, and I said that I, I am, I am a, a, a resident there. I don't want to see a parking lot outside my, 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 you know, my, 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 my front door, but I, but as I stated, what else could be there could, could, though, could be a lot worse. I do think this is a, a good compromise, a bit to do between all parties involved. And I would just ask that everything is, uh, is enforced inside, uh, the, the, uh, resolution and that, um, Ballyhoo continues to have a good relationship with, uh, with, with the, with the city and, and the residents there.
Oh, Chief, thanks, Mayor. Um, I just want to say this, because we deal with a lot of these issues and if you're not going to be a good neighbor, if you guys want to violate, you're going to bring a lot of police scrutiny on you. That's just the way it's going to be. We have a lot of these situations going on in town. And if you're not going to comply with it and whoever the owner is, it's your job to make sure that your employees know what the rules are. Because again, if we start getting complaints, you're going to bring scrutiny on yourself and, and you would deserve it. So, thank you.
With that, is there no other questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve. Can I recommend that we add the third condition regarding employee signage, employee parking only signage into the resolution?
Motion to approve with the employee only signage.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Penny?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, we've had item number thirty-four. Uh, item thirty-five is Resolution twenty thirteen dash fifteen, uh, revise authorized, uh, signatories.
Resolution twenty thirteen dash fifteen, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, designating certain officials as authorized signatories and negotiable instruments of the City of Tarpon Springs after reading the Resolution two thousand thirteen dash fifteen by title only.
Any questions? Is there strength forward, uh, any public comments on the item? Chair will entertain a motion?
With approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item thirty-six, Ordinance twenty thirteen, requiring appointed advisory and, um, quasi judicial board members to take an oath of office, first reading.
Ordinance two thousand thirteen dash ten, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, imposing section two dash one of the code of ordinances entitled, appointments to advisory and quasi judicial boards to require members of appointed advisory and quasi judicial boards to take an oath of office, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That's the reading, that's the first reading of ordinance two thousand thirteen dash ten by title only. The second reading will be held on May seventh, two thousand thirteen and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on April twenty-first, two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, I will, uh, additional comments left on the vote? Any, uh, questions or what else? Any public comments? Chair will entertain a motion?
With approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Ordinance, uh, item number thirty-seven, ordinance twenty thirteen dash two of Internet caf- uh, cafe moratorium, first reading.
Ordinance two thousand thirteen dash twelve, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, imposing a hundred and eighty-day moratorium on accepting applications for any permitted or conditional use which involves the sale of Internet time or access associated with any form of contest that may constitute a sweepstakes promotion in the Florida law imposing a hundred and eighty-day temporary abatement on the operation and use of simulated gaming devices for the use by the public on, on any premises, providing for definitions, providing for exemptions, uh, providing for severability, providing for enforcement, providing an effective date, first reading of ordinance two thousand thirteen dash twelve by title only. The second reading will be held on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. This will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on April twenty-first, two thousand thirteen.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions? Any public comments? Chair will entertain a motion?
With approval.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Um, item number thirty-eight, this is appointment to firefighters' attention board. I think we have two. Uh, I'll bet. Uh, Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to appoint Jim Bolden and William Larson Jr. to this board, term to expire nine thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Any, uh, public comments on this item? Roll call?
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Penny?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Slattery?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. And that concludes our regular session agenda. Uh, Chief?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Your attorney?
No comments.
So, I get my apple back that despite a long-winded attorney, we still haven't finished that part before it's done. Matter of fact, you, you can even, you want my apple too? Uh, just reminder, as we mentioned before about that city event, we do have some very nice trees that were given day to celebrate Arbor Day, part of course, to show all of our equipment and all ours to the apartment, departments at the event last Saturday of the month. So, we encourage everybody to be out there.
Madam Clerk?
No comments.
Commissioner Townsend?
I'm Mr. Townsend.
Chair Penny?
Let's see, uh, I don't really have any comments. I would just ask, um, the city manager, I know I asked you earlier in the day about the lighting project. Um, when do you think that we can, is there a need to bring it back to, to the commission for anything? Or, or, when, if, and if there is, when do you expect to do that?
Uh, we may need, uh, bring the, I'm not sure if we need to bring the actual bid for the lights and stuff back here or not. That'd be the only thing, but, um, now that we, as I told you there, we had progress. They need to give us some ideas about the, uh, the, um, some advice on the wiring and stuff. So, pretty much all of that's accomplished, so it, it should be ready to, to go next month. So, the only thing we may need to bring back is the contract for the, the, providing the lights and stuff. But, uh, you know, we're, we're ready to go. The, the electric and the wiring, which we had some concerns about prior to that, she was very gracious and helping us and, uh, gave us a good course of action that we, uh-
So, there's no bid on the actual constru- or the actual infrastructure going in because we're doing all that in-house?
Right. It's just the purchase of the light.
Of the light, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Um, no comment.
Mr. Lawson?
No comment.
Commissioner Banther?
Uh, I do not intend to miss my second commission meeting, um, and hey, but I, I have promised to take my wife away, uh, prior to my election and that we have, we have a future planned. So, I will not be at a D next meeting and I'll make sure to, uh, uh, email Trish and make that formal.
Do you have to vote on him being a chairman?
I, no. It looks bad, I know.
Uh, no, no, you know, we all have, uh, you know, engagements, the things that we have. You know, engagements and things that we have to do and stuff.
We took care of a lot of buildings.
We have a few more meetings to do this year, so don't worry about it. We'll be assured at the meeting.
There should be nothing on next week's meeting.
Well, this was a very robust agenda, but, you know, even though we had, I won't call it, you know, long-winded like some people, but it was, uh, a lot sad. But, we were still adjourned this, uh, meeting at ten o'clock.